Good evening, everyone. Although the clock to my left says 5:47, everybody else has at least 6 o'clock on their watches, so we'll call the meeting to order. And start the meeting by asking if there's any comment from the public? Anything from the public would like to say something?
I was going to introduce the parent liaisons. Are any other parent liaisons coming? There are. So we'll wait a sec, then. So we'll continue on.
As far as I know.
I can't offer otherwise.
This is for a meeting. I'm in chief.
Okay. Does any school committee member have anything they'd like to offer for the good of the organization? Okay. Seeing none, and I have nothing. I'm not going to offer anything tonight. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. And the first item is approval of the 2019-2020 school calendar, which is on page four of your document.
Yeah, as I mentioned before, the -- we're going to start school pending approval of this calendar after Labor Day to give the construction folks a little more time. And the way Labor Day fell this year was very early. So Jack has suggested a calendar. He's met with the Minuteman Faculty Association and discussed it. And from our side of things, it looks like a good calendar for the year we're about to have. I don't know if there's a couple of things you wanted to mention about the orientation, sort of an extra time for orientation at the beginning of the year?
Yeah, if you look at the first week of September, we break it down so that September 3 will be orientation for our grades 10 and 12 students, and then the 4th will be orientation for grades 9 and 11. Typically, in the years past, we've done orientation for freshmen only. However, since no student is going to be familiar with the building, we feel it's important to have orientation for every class. And what we'd like to do, too, sometime in August, we'd like to try to get the building available, at least for a week or two, and have students come in with their schedules and be able to walk the building at their leisure and try to find their way around. And we'll maybe incorporate some fun stuff, like a, you know, something fun, some fun activities for them to do.
Scavenger hunt.
Scavenger hunt or something for them to do. So.
Anyone have a question about the calendar? All right, do we hear a motion to approve? Did you get that? All in favor? And none opposed and any abstentions, none. So it's 9-0 with Acton not here.
Thank you. And we'll publish this a little bit earlier than we have in the past, too, because we've had some calls already about our calendar.
Okay. Moving on to approval of the amendment to the employment contract for Assistant Superintendent for Finance, Kevin Mahoney.
Yeah, this is as we discussed last meeting. The motion was prepared by our council. And I would hope someone would make the motion.
Do you have a motion? Okay.
I want to make a motion.
She's going to do it.
So Carrie.
Where he thinks he has the right to resign. Because I know he's not leaving us behind. He's going to enter into some sort of consulting agreement to help with the transition.
Any question about the motion? All in favor? 9-0. Any opposed? None and no abstentions. Thank you, Kevin. We expect good things from you. Nothing under goal -- the next goal is we'll move down to the superintendent's goal number Superintendent will support and guide the expansion of a robust marketing recruitment of disability campaign to increase member town applications. And the topic under that is enrollment and snapshot of -- first item is snapshot of enrollment data, which is in your packet and is page six, and also item two, in district enrollment. George, were you going to -- were you --
Yeah.
George, did you --
We have three of the liaisons who want to --
Yes, let's do that. Yeah, it'd be great.
So --
Go ahead.
So you may recall, we've engaged five parent liaisons, three of whom are here today. And I'd like you to come up and sit up at the table, parent liaisons. You can introduce yourselves. But we had lunch Monday. Was that yesterday? Yeah. We had lunch together. It was a great hour of getting to know each other a little bit, hearing some of their ideas from the towns that they are working in. And I'll just ask you to introduce yourself and say hi.
Hello.
Do you want to press?
Okay, thanks. Hello, my name is Lisa Williams, and I live in Concord, and my son is a junior here. He's an automotive major, and it's been a great place for him. And, you know, I'm grateful. So I'm a teacher in Lexington, and so I remember you. You may not remember me.
I do, yes.
I was a new, new teacher when you were principal at Estra Brook.
An old principal.
Yeah, so I was excited to see -- last year I saw you were the chair, and so I was excited to see that. And I believe I'm neighbors with Carrie Flood. But Minuteman's a great place, and I am excited for the opportunity to spread the word and to share what it's done for our family and for my son.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Wood. I've been with Minuteman for six years now. I had one child graduate in 2017, and his program was environmental science, and he is now a sophomore at Franklin Pierce University. I have another child here now that's a senior, and he is in carpentry, so he will be graduating this year and will continue on to a four-year college as well. I'm also a mother of an incoming ninth grader for next year. He's coming for his interview shortly. And I also have another six-year-old who is all Minuteman, and he already knows that he's joining Mr. P. in environmental science. And I'm representing Lancaster, Stowe, and Bolton.
I want to know, does it count towards --
Does it count towards the recruitment effort if it's your own children?
Yes.
We get Bitcoin for that. All right. Hi, I'm Chris DeGraw-Dana. I live in Needham, and I am really, really pleased to represent Minuteman in and around the community of Needham. I work at a -- my son is a sophomore. He's a welder, a very, very happy and tired welder. I thank you for that. And I just -- I already -- I already spread the word about Minuteman because I work part-time for a community, the Needham Community Council, which is a human services organization. So I come in contact with hundreds of Needham residents all the time, and my kids call me the mayor of old people when I'm in the grocery store. So I'm just really pleased to be able to use -- utilize my knowledge of the town to help out here because it's been amazing for my son.
Thank you very much. And there's one more, but not here?
Two more.
Two more. I thought there were five, but so the fifth one was hired. Okay. And could you just tell us what communities they're from and who they are?
We have Belmont and --
No.
No, not -- sorry, you're right.
Acton.
Acton and Belmont, yes.
She has a freshman from Acton, and the Belmont man has a sophomore.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, so we've already -- I was very impressed at our lunch we had this week, and we're going to have -- try to get together at least every six weeks or so and have lunch and just talk about what I can do for you and how things are going. But they know where to go in town. They know places that we don't hear about quite often, where to put things, where to talk to people. So we had a lot of good ideas generated, and we're really looking forward to working together, to share the value-add of Minuteman. I don't know if anyone had a quick question or anything or comment?
Jack, and then Jeff?
Couple of quick things that they've done so far. We contacted -- first of all, we had over 25 applicants for these five positions, so, you know, congratulations to you guys for being chosen. Felt like we had a good pick here. But they showed up for open house, and they've served on a parent panel, and that was full. That was full with parents asking questions. So they did a great job with that. The next homework assignment for me, which is due soon, by the way, is they're going to submit a letter to us, so then we can review it, and it's then going to be mailed out. We'll help them do that to all of our eighth grade parents as to what made them help their children choose Minuteman. Because again, we can sell to the kids. It's the parents that we really need to touch base with, so they'll be doing that, too. And then we have a couple of other projects moving down the pike for them as well, so we have a lot of things planned for them.
Great.
But they're doing a great job.
Jeff?
Yes, I have two questions. The first one was, David Horton a good principal?
Excellent.
Excellent.
Really?
No pressure.
I was at a different school, but I know he was very well-liked.
Do you read storybooks at that level?
No.
Just want to make sure.
Yes.
And for Needham.
Of course.
A community where, you know, if you don't go into Harvard and Yale, then, you know, you're suspect. What do you think would be the best strategy to try to change the mindset of the citizens in Needham so that for children who would benefit from this school, they would feel like they have permission to select this along with their kid?
Well, so --
It's a possible question. I just want to get the thought off the top of my head.
I think the commonality with parents in Needham. I mean, I had a daughter who's a junior at Norwich University in the nursing program who went to Needham High and loved Needham High, and it was great for her. But it was not great for my son. As a matter of fact, if he had gone to Needham High, I may have to peel him off the hospital floor right now. I'm just not sure. And Minuteman, it's all about the kids. And when you talk to parents one-on-one and you look them in their eyes, and I have a lot of them because they come through because of their kids doing required community service in eighth grade through the high school, is that every kid is different, and there's so much pressure in Needham, and most people will agree with that. And I think just making it about the kids that can do what they want to do and not necessarily be cookie cutter.
Carrie?
I just -- I have been frustrated. Concord's enrollment here has increased a lot in the last few years, but I have still been frustrated as my grandson moved from the eighth grade to freshman year, how many of his friends wouldn't come here because of doubts the parents had about what they would be exposed to, would they, you know, will they really have the academic rigor that, you know, we expect? And I don't think anybody is going to have more credibility talking with those parents than parents of current and recent former students here. That, you know, you can speak from your own experience, from your kids' experience, from the friends that they have made here. I think there's just so much here that can enrich a kid's life that parents who are external to it just could not see and appreciate on their own. So, thank you.
And that's the questions we had during the parent panel, was parents afterwards, after the presentation was done, they actually came to us, and I talked to a family of triplets, and they came from Belmont. And I relayed that we had a couplets come from Lancaster and how the parents negotiated their kids and how each child went off to a different program. They all didn't stay the same. But it was interesting, and after talking to the parents, the three boys all kind of lined up. And then they had a fourth one, and they all asked the questions. And the biggest question was, how do you choose a major? How do you do this? How do you do this? How do you negotiate? And just educating them, it was nice just to talk to the three of them. But the parents actually ended up sitting down and took all of it in. But it was questions that I had when I decided to bring my first child here and looking at the whole big picture. My second child was automatic. He already loved it. He came here for summer camp. And now the third one is, he's on the fence. He's honest. He's on the fence, but he's leaning more to. And after he came through the tour, it opens their eyes, and it's just bringing the kids here and making the parents open their eyes and answering their simple questions. And the biggest question from my district is the bus ride. How can we negotiate this bus ride? And having simple answers to achieve. This one boy that lives, his bus picks him up at quarter to six. His parents altered to call the bus company. He's now being picked up in the middle school at 6:30. So he gained 45 minutes of his day by just moving his bus stop. And it's little things like that that help parents out and help to make that decision.
Interesting you bring that up because what settled my own grandson's mind was Concord's recent change to a later start time. And that's why he's at Concord Carlisle and not here.
I mean, teenagers getting that extra 45 minutes is huge.
Yeah. I noticed that Pam Nurse from Acton has just arrived. And was there an accident on the road? Is that -- we heard about that, yeah.
I also have a --
Okay. And would you mind -- would you introduce yourselves so Pam will know who you are? These are three of the liaisons. And Pam is chairing a committee on -- a school committee on enrollment, so she would, I'm sure would like to just know, to hear about you, hear you from you.
Thank you. Hello, I am -- my name is Lisa Williams, and my son attends Minuteman. He's a junior. He's an automotive major. It's been a great place for him. I also have a daughter, a 19-year-old daughter who went through Concord Carlisle. And I live in -- yeah, Concord, and I'm a teacher, an elementary teacher at Fisk School in Lexington as well, so.
Hi, I'm Susan Wood. I live in Lancaster. I had one son that graduated in 2017 in environmental science, and I have another child that's a senior and is enrolled in the carpentry program. And I have a potential eighth grader looking to come, and he's coming in for his interview. And I have a sixth grader who already knows that he's coming here. Minuteman's been a great opportunity for my kids, especially my oldest took advantage of everything possible National Honor Society Skill USA. And Jeffrey has taken advantage of everything that the carpentry program has offered, and I can't say enough. They love it, and they've been involved, and it's been nice.
Hi, I'm Chris. I live in Needham, and my son is a sophomore here in Welding, and my daughter went to Needham High School. I have a part-time job at a community nonprofit that gives me access to many parents and students, and I already tout Minuteman and how wonderful it is. And so I thought, my gosh, what a great opportunity to do it more formally.
What I'd also like to add to, on top of the couple of questions that are answered here or asked here, is that if you have -- if there are resources that -- I mean, certainly you can work through George and Maggie, but if there are resources you feel you need or whatever from the school committee, please let the school committee through George or Dr. Bucquillan or George or Maggie know what you feel you would like, that you would like us to do on your behalf to support your work or whatever. But we really would welcome that, yes.
May I ask that for those of you that have sort of an ideal, like a best-case scenario in your mind as to what the role would bring to Minuteman, like on paper and not? That would be really good. It would be really great to see different perspectives, especially, you know, the Needham perspective. I know the issue already about the parents, but --
We'll get together.
Yes, that would actually, that would be great because it's important for me to aspire to goals that I feel like maybe are high in the sky, and we see what happens.
I'm not high in the sky, Rick, but I can talk to them.
Okay.
Boy?
Also, I'm from Dover, but I spend a lot of time in Needham.
Okay.
And I will tell you that your selectmen and your finance committees are all very strong proponents
Yes, they are.
-- of Minuteman.
I know that.
And so does Dave Fitzpatrick and also --
Oh, we --
You're in -- I can't answer for Lancaster or Concord, but I can for Needham.
Talented. Yep.
You got a lot of support.
Yes. It's just about someone to make a mouthpiece.
Correct. That's what we need.
Yes. Good job on that. Good idea.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your being here tonight and what we're doing together to get the word out about Minuteman.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks to all of us.
You're welcome to stay, but I told you you could leave at 6:30. But it's really almost 6:30, so don't believe that clown.
But it's going to be an exciting meeting to attend, so you might want to stay.
George and Maggie, did you have anything you wanted to add at this point or?
They're going to -- yeah.
Or are you going to -- are you sort of be on the agenda for about the member town middle school student parent access that item?
Let me help you, yes. George is going to give an overview of some of the recent activity that's reflected in this handout right here. In regards to -- while he's getting ready to do that, the middle school parent access requirements, we got some suggestions from a couple of school committee members. I wanted to give folks a last opportunity to add anything else they want, and we can -- oh, this is from Jack, and this is from Alice, and this is from Jeff. Were there any other comments about that? I shared it with the parent liaisons as well.
I just had a few, but I really liked --
Okay.
I liked what Jeff and Alice had suggested, but those are --
So I haven't had time to incorporate these into one document, but I don't think there's any urgency on voting on it this evening, so we can incorporate them and get a draft back to you to actually vote on in the next meeting. Yes.
So the language I recommend here in this document is the one that you referred to?
Yes.
I'm taking the stance, which is, I think, different than we've done before, fairly aggressively, that we are stating in direct language that we are an equal portion of the education opportunities. That's the viewpoint we're taking here, specifically in this document. And I think that viewpoint is necessary to help us overcome any reluctance we may run into with respect to having them incorporate these guidelines. And I'm also hoping that there may be other guidelines for other areas of our change viewpoint. So in my discussion with people, my viewpoint is not going to be relegated to the, you know, the ugly stepsister kind of thinking that is going on. I'm saying very aggressively that, no, we are just as integral a portion of the education as your school is. And the argument for this long list, which they will object to because they have to do a lot of things, remember, the primary argument, one of the primary arguments is this. They get propaganda, not propaganda, understanding about their school system 180 days a year for nine or 10 years. Okay? That's it. They already have that in addition to all these meetings they have about the transition to the high school. They've never heard about Minuteman until they basically, until they come up to this cycle here. This is the only window of communications that they are giving us. That's why I have no trouble defending this and their complaints that it's going to cost us a lot of time and effort. Did you know? You've already had 180 times nine days with these kids, talking to them about it, essentially your school system. You're only -- you want to steal a couple of hours, two hours, three hours from us? I don't think so. So I'd be relatively aggressive in defending that point of view, that that's the reason why they should adopt these things. Because otherwise, what hope is there for anybody to understand this option?
Alice?
We're going to defend our writing. My comments have yellow on them. So my fundamental approach was to try to take what we had from Jack and George and add to it an explanation of making sure that all member town's students had equal access to information and to give more explanation of why the things were needed and to express gratitude for their work in working with us. And to take out the numbers, because I felt like the numbers didn't help, but it's really the things that they need to do that should be listed. And that's -- when I went through it, it was really from the point of view of like, if I'm reading this, I need to understand why I need to do this action. And so I added a lot of stuff in about that. That's it.
Any other question or comments at this point? Well, I'm sure that what you wrote and what Jeff wrote would be -- oh, sorry. Sorry, Pam, will be considered.
Just listening right now to Jeff and Alice, one of the things that occurred to me, while this is like parent and student access, but do we want to add anything in here that, you know, touches on guidance counselors? And either having them, particularly new guidance counselors, you know, have some, get some familiarity with Minuteman, but like include them as a constituent in this document as well.
Jeff?
I also thought about that, but then I said, this is really a document with respect to the admissions cycle. And I left language here open that there's going to be other guidelines. I think that the guidance counselor thing may want to be a document on its own. So I thought about adding it, that maybe we should consider adding it as a point here. But then I think that maybe that's going to be complicated enough that it might, you know, make this more complicated for them. Let's focus on the students and the parents here, and the guidance councils will be in another document because they're still working on developing a program, whether Desi is going to get involved with that and whatnot. So I think that it is absolutely just as essential as this to create our program, to have all the guidance counselors come through the school every few years. I'm just not convinced it belongs in this particular document.
Any response to that, Pam?
And, you know, I could go either way. I just don't want to get to a point where a school would say, look, you gave us a document. We've done everything on here. Now you're asking for something else that even if we don't go into detail, you know, I just raised the question, is it worth at least acknowledging them in this?
Carrie?
I have a similar viewpoint with Pam. I think that it doesn't need to be an aggressive, hard line, I think, but it needs to be that there is access and a channel of communication to the guidance departments in that community because they don't all of a sudden wake up in the eighth grade and say, now, where do you want to go to high school? There's a process that leads there. And things that a guidance counselor is observing and discussing with parents, I think, can help make that decision easier, clearer, if it's not something that seems to be sprung on them at the last minute.
Okay. Anyone else on that topic? We've talked about that a number of times, about the significance and the importance and the value of guidance counselors knowing about Minuteman, et cetera, et cetera. So perhaps you could consider adding a piece of that, a piece into or part of that into or a little bit of that into this document, and we'll run it up the poll and see what it's like.
Yes.
If only to remind them that there is access for guidance counselors, new staff in the guidance department to come and familiarize themselves with the program
Okay.
and the department here, contacts and stuff like that.
Good. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to George.
Great. Okay, thank you. Hopefully you can follow along in your packet if you can. Hopefully you can see it up here. So this first slide we have here is, and we're just focusing on in-district activity because that's our primary focus in admissions, so we are trending in the right direction, definitely. If you look at the amount of applications that we have, last year it took us until the end of February to get 118 in-district applications. As of today, the 18th, we are already at 114. We'll probably hit 118 by the end of the month. I don't see why not. The applications keep pouring in, so we're in a good space. We're in a good space. There's probably a lot of reasons why we're in a good space. There's probably a lot of reasons why we're in a good space. I could talk about all those reasons, I don't know what's on your mind, so you tell me.
George, off the top of the head, do you have a recollection of what it was like two years ago? Because that was another...
Even lower. It was even lower than that.
You lined up pretty well.
Yeah, usually we get a big bump. We get a big bump usually in March, because what tends to happen for kids is they're not sure, they don't know if they wanna apply, we start accepting kids in March, and then the kids have also gone through their step-up nights at their local high schools, and they get that taste in their mouth, like, you know what, I probably should've gone and checked out Minuteman, I probably should just do that now. So that's usually when we get a big bump. But I think, you know, there's a lot of reasons why we're doing much better this year, so I'm just gonna highlight a couple of those reasons, because I think it'll just inform some of the discussion that we'll probably have here tonight. So, one of the big differences between last year and this year is obviously sitting in the back of the room, that's Ms. Maggie Miller, as our Assistant Director of Admissions. The real, she brings many benefits to us. One is that she's able to provide an additional presence at middle schools and build those relationships up with people. At least for me in the office, we're able to delegate some more tasks to someone else and make sure that they get done. So what you're seeing are some of the little extras we haven't done in the past, like lawn signs that we distributed here, or we gave out, you know, Minuteman clings, window clings at the advisory board dinner, something that's been in my mind, but just I need a little help executing. The radio spots, we advertised on radio this year, so she was really helpful with that. But I think probably her biggest contribution is that, you know, I get a lot of free advice from people and ideas about what we could do in our, to improve things. Some of the ideas are really massive in scope, probably untenable, and I'm always kinda listening and judging that off of some advice I really, I got from one of my first mentors when I entered the profession, it was Dan O'Hearn, he was, he is still the Assistant Headmaster at Landmark School. And he said, I remember him talking, and he said, "Schools get in trouble when they take their eye off the ball, and the ball is the kids." So you always remember that your job is to provide the kids in your charge with the best education and the best services. And everything else is secondary, and everything else will fall into line. So when I'm sifting through ideas that people give me sometimes, I'm not always finding a lot of substance left when I'm done, but with Maggie, I have somebody who has a marketing background, she's been in admissions, she's experiencing the same things that I'm experiencing, because she's going out, meeting the same people in schools, and parents and kids, so I'm getting a fresh and informed perspective, so that when we do go through this, I really have a co-collaborator now, and it's just lots of little tweaks and presentations and everything that we're doing, that are just that much stronger than they were definitely a year ago. And I think also a year ago, you know, we underwent a lot of changes. Everybody here at Minuteman, like, we tell everyone, everyone's job is admissions. Well, everybody here wears multiple hats, and I think last year has thrown on a couple of different hats that, you know, kind of were a drag, frankly, a little bit, on what we were doing in admissions. So, we learned a lot of lessons from that, so, for example, we did a reorg last year, and in that reorg, we cut the data specialist. So I became the data specialist. So, the logic there being, since I get a lot of the initial demographic data that comes in, you know, well, then you can manage all the data, about everything, from schedules to parent accounts to grade books to all of that stuff, and I, you know, you do what you gotta do, the place needed it, but I didn't have any training in that, I have no experience in that. Anyway, so that was a busy time, really, in September, spending a couple hours a day really working on that. But that also meant I had to pick up the Sims reporting, SCS reporting, you know, that's a whole nother art form in and of itself, and that's in October, and October's the time when I'm out of the building half the time doing presentations. We're also gearing up the faculty with professional development for their showcase day. So, to get the Sims report done, you know, we hired somebody from Greater Lowell to come and help me. So I was doing that on the weekends, I spent all Columbus State weekend here just trying to get it done, because there's 50 fields, 300-plus codes, you know, if somebody leaves a code blank, all you get from the state is, there's an error. Great, it's like, where's Waldo? You gotta figure it out. I don't know, but we got through it, and, you know, now we have John Camerata, who's, you know, more than adequately filling up that space, and we got him here in November, which was great, because I really needed that to, I was really suffocating, frankly, under that yoke. So, that's a different thing this year. Last year we had the retirement of Bill Blake, so I picked up more teachers to evaluate. That's fine, because curriculum instruction assessment, I'm an expert there, so that's, you know, elevating the work of teachers, we've been doing that for a long time, did it here, I was a reading coach here, teaching everybody about literacy strategies, so perfectly comfortable with that. But it meant things like picking up the Title I grant in the administration, and when I, you have to set it up in September, and when I saw the grant and finally really read through it, we were a targeted assistance program, and I read about how you could turn it into a school-wide program. Essentially, the difference is, when you go school-wide, you can help more kids more freely with the funds. So, it was just staring me in the face, that's the right thing to do, so it took time, you know, and effort, but, you know, we did that, we converted that. We also had, it was our six-year audit for that, too. So that audit was due, we had open house on a Sunday, the following Friday we had our first shadow day, and dead smack in the middle, that's when I had to submit, you know, all the documentation, all the reports that go with it, so it was really, you know, but that isn't happening this year, that's great. That's all behind us. We had some changes in practice as well, to help the district realize some savings. We ended our contract with Mark Perna and Tools for Schools, but Tools for Schools is the outfit that created all of our marketing materials and mailed all of our marketing materials. So, you know, down in our office, we kinda went from, if we needed a mailing to go out, we'd probably get it about six weeks in advance, we'd spend two or three days going over proof, and then I forgot about it. Now, last year was the first time, all right, I have to maybe recycle some things, work with people, other artists, to try to get something made, working with an independent printer to figure it out, and so I found myself a lot of times, you know, I want the thing mailed today, but I'm just getting the proof that I like today. So I was always about a week behind, but I kinda know that now, and we're dealing with that better this year, and I'm really hoping that later in this agenda, you know, we pick up, you know, a marketing firm or a graphic artist that I wanna work with, and, you know, kinda seal this up a little bit. So, that was, we're dealing with that better. I think the building video is, the building itself is being very well-received, and I asked, if you saw the video, that's something I asked Andrew to produce this summer, and he did a great job, and I think it's building interest. I think, social media-wise, you were doing a great job. If, I took it over from the Educational Technology Department in 2015, and if you look at where we are now, we have more followers on Facebook than Arlington High, we have more followers on Facebook than Blackstone Valley, so, you know, two big schools that we might be compared to, we're very tiny, but we have more followers, because we're generating more content, and we're doing a great job there, and the word's getting out, and I have a slide that kinda shows the effectiveness of that. We're getting more tech support, if you came to our open house, so, you know, was able to work this year with the digital learning curators, a little group that we have, put teachers on the problem of how do we register people for our events, how do we capture their data, how do we print name tags, this is what I want, put the right people on it, and now we've got a much better data tracking system from that, so that's been really great. I think last year, too, you know, if we're gonna borrow from Rumsfeld, we had some unknown unknowns, which were things like, didn't know that we're gonna get a new superintendent in Woburn, so a year prior, we would've had 12 more admissions. New superintendent, didn't see it coming, we lost 12 kids that we otherwise would've probably had just a year before, we didn't know that. We had some known unknowns, particularly with the DeClarence towns, you know, who, we didn't know how they were gonna behave, now we do, we know who's freezing us out completely, and, you know, who's tepidly kinda working with us, so that was also a change in what we were experiencing. Of course, I think we still know, we will always be dealing with the stigma that is, you know, that unfortunately CTE programs have, and I remember talking with Jeff one time, him saying that even in his own school, trying to convince people in his own school, the value of CTE programs that are down the hall was a real challenge, but our challenge is, we're not down the hall, we got 10 towns, we're trying to change perception of 10 towns, 10 different, you know, all these different faculties, everybody else, so it's a big battle, so, but that's all right, we're up for it, you know, we're doing what we can do, and I also think, finally, another piece of this, and this will lead into the next slide, is that Jack and I spent the spring going around to our schools, and kinda what you're talking about a little bit there, Jeff, where we didn't walk in entitled, we're not walking in desperate, we're walking in as partners and really talking about what's best for kids, and we brainstormed ideas about parent nights and splitting up larger groups to give more presentations, all that. All that was laid out really in the spring, and it really came to fruition, it's paying some dividends this year. So I think all of those reasons together are why we're doing a much better job this year. So you can see, this is, these are some of those activities that just alluded to, and some of these, you know, I shared this with someone from Southeast, shocked, they were just shocked, you know, to break Lexington into six different presentations, that's unheard of, to get that kind of access, but, you know, we've been working hard at building that relationship, so you can see here, the presentations that we did, we did get 40-minute presentations everywhere, it's a little bit of work, it was easier in some places, harder than others. Here's the parent night, so if it's in Green, that means we were able to do a parent presentation at their school, because we find that that's, we've always thought, we've tried to do them here, they don't come here, but if we go to you, it's right in your backyard. So you can see who went along with that. We started a program, because we have Maggie, we're calling it Lunch and Learn, so after presentations are done, Maggie in particular will go to the middle school, sit in the cafeteria, set up a little Minuteman booth, and just be there to answer questions and register kids, and, you know, have those conversations with guidance councils who wanna know, explain honors English to me? Sure, there you go. So you can see here who gave us access to do that. We've talked about reaching out to CPAC groups, so we've got a couple, we got another one scheduled coming up in Lexington, usually on this one, because it is special education, it's usually, we're bringing Amy Peralt with us, so it's, you know, Maggie and I and Amy. And then we keep asking, and this is a task we talked about a little bit with the parent liaisons, we wanna get to the local PTAs, we wanna get to their meetings. We've got to Lexington's, we still have some other work to do there, but this is good, I feel like we're getting good access. Showcase day, we ran that, yes?
I'm sorry, Dr. P, going back to the other one?
Sure.
So, there's a lot of PTA presentations that haven't happened in the CPAC. Is that because the schools aren't responding, or is that because you haven't had a chance to get out yet?
Mostly it's the schools aren't responding. We've had some conversations with Dover that have just kinda, you know, I don't know where they are, they just keep kinda going around and around, yeah, we're gonna get to it, okay, we'll call you next week, and, all right, I get it, we're all busy, so yeah, yes.
I know in Arlington, the Addison Middle School, you know, the PTA is really, really well-attended in the elementary schools. They hit the Addison, and 15 people show up, that's it. So I'm not sure that's a relevant category for us, anyway, I don't know how it works for others. Can't get to parents that way. It's a couple of leading parents, but that's it.
Yeah, well, we're gonna try every way we can, and hopefully we can get somebody to get us access to the right group in Arlington, that'd be great.
Yes, during the lunch and learns, which sounded like a great idea to me, do you have to eat the cafeteria food?
I don't think Maggie eats any of that. No, she's on a paleo diet, no.
Just worried about, you know, health and the such and such.
No, gotta keep her energized. So this is our showcase day data, this is only for in-district kids, so the process is, we present at middle schools with the intent of inviting all the children to come and check us out for showcase day, and it's in-district only, because that's our primary focus. So, what we have here, this is the schools over here and the towns, and then how many kids came from each area. Now down here at the bottom, I have just a sort of a mix of, you know, kids who attended private schools that somehow heard of us, or, you know, homeschool situation or whatever, so, but they're, they're all in district is what really matters, so you can see the numbers here. It's the best show we've ever had, 403 kids, which is really good. We're starting, we changed our format in 2015, it was the first time we've been doing it this way, so you can kinda see, we've been, we're pretty steady here, and then this year we really popped it open. Yep?
George, for those districts that we're having trouble in, we currently have it set up as an opt-in to come to the school, why not flip it and make them opt-out not coming?
Yeah.
Because the problem, the problem that I see specifically in Bolton is, the parents are typically affluent and they're busy, they're not getting the notifications in a timely fashion in order for the kids to be authorized to come to school, and the way they did it for, at least my daughter's eighth grade, for when they do the field trips, it's, they opt-out. So they, at the beginning of the year, they sign a form saying, all field trips and stuff, they authorize for, and then they have to opt-out if they're not gonna attend the field trip.
Yeah. Two things on that. One is strategically, from working with our consultant a few years ago, and actually even Jack started this, kinda this process even prior to that, we used to have all kids come in, and what we found is that you'd get kids who were here who really aren't interested, and what happens is, they're eighth graders, so they act up, they act fresh, they make it a bad experience for the kids who really are, and in some ways, make it even worse, because they discourage kids, this is stupid, no, I don't wanna be stupid, I don't, I'm not really interested, but I am, but I don't wanna show it. So, the change in philosophy is, all right, well, just the ones, if you really wanna be here, all right, and then now we'll work with it. We have talked a little bit, just internally, about the opportunity that the new building brings, and whether or not maybe, particularly, it would really work well in the Shoba districts, because you're small enough, and we could probably handle having a day, say, and where, yeah, you know what, why don't you just bring your whole eighth grade? We're talking about it, but we haven't decided yet.
Yeah, the after-school program that used to be in place, and, you know, so, we used to have the kids bust for the after-school programs and stuff, because they were coming on a regular basis and they were encouraged to be in that program, they had much more exposure. The one day or the two days that they hear about it, it's not enough to sell it. Specifically, with the bus rides and the idea, the legacy idea that CTE is for those kids that are not going to college, we can't change the mindset, specifically with parents and some of these students, unless we change the way we're marketing specifically to the Shoba. I mean, Lancaster has done an outstanding job, but they've done huge efforts to push within their community to get people to come and check out the building, to check out and talk to kids. I'm struggling with reaching those parents, and the biggest effort that we've seen is social media, and we just don't do enough of it. Again, a lot of the stuff we used to do, I'm talking mid-'80s, we need to get back to that grassroots effort with having the kids come out to the community and showing their face of what the school does for the community, to change the perception of what it is that we're doing over here. And we have that opportunity, we're just, we need to flip it.
Well, I think you'll find that we're definitely bringing back the eighth grade, the middle school after-school program, you'll be seeing that kick off in March, and I would encourage you, I can talk to you later about the work that our kids do do, we usually put up signs whenever the kids are out in the community doing their work, so we're out there, and we're doing, that hasn't gone away, I mean, they're out there. They did some work in Bolton last year, so, I mean, you know, I, we do what we can, as far as that goes, but you are seeing certainly that program come back. So, at the end of showcase, we have the kids do a quick survey, I think I was showing Ford how we do it, because it's a real, you get a real compact time to do it. So, three key questions that we asked is, how do you feel about today? And it's just smiley faces, just circle what you like, so, 87% said they were having a great time, 12% thought it was okay, and 1% they weren't really thrilled. Do you think you will apply? Well, we always get the biggest right in here, maybe, they don't know, they're not so sure, and even this, we've never had 36% apply, but I like that they're thinking that way, that's really good, and we know who they are, anyway, so that's also good. Then 8% is a no, which is fine, that's why we have the day in the first place, to help kids make... That's why we have the day in the first place, to help kids make informed decisions. This year, we also asked about a Vet Tech program, because I know that there's been some interest in possibly launching that program. So 36% said yes. And that's, I think that's pretty high, considering that, you know, that's a pretty broad spectrum of kids that we're bringing in, but they're interested in knowing more about it. Right, where else do you go? It'll probably be here, yes.
About how many of the kids at the Showcase answered the question?
All of them, that's part of the, that's part of the, that's part of the in-service training we do with people, is remember, at the end of the session, remove their name tag, have them fill out the survey that's on the back, collect it, and then give them a replacement name tag that advertises for the open house that is now upcoming, yes.
36% of the kids are attending all 403, so they would, they think they will apply, and you already have 118?
Mm-hmm, yep. Just breaking down the data some more. So this, well, this is a different event, we had our open house in 12-2 as a follow-up, and so this is just the, you know, the in-district totals. That's what you want to see, we want to see a lot of eighth-grade admissions. But we get some upperclassmen as well, and we had a pretty, you know, some seventh graders show up as well. So it's the first time we've really been able to collect that data like this. If you saw it, we had kiosks set up, and everybody logged in and created a little, gave us a little bit of information. We've tried to do it with paper and pen. I've tried it for three years, I've been begging for a digital solution, and like I said, this year I was able to get it. So I knew this would work, and it did. So that's why you're seeing this. But open house means anybody can come. So we also got out-of-district, and I broke them into two different categories. Eligible, meaning that I think they have a reasonable chance of getting approved and maybe being here. So you can see the towns that are sending kids. Watertown, that's 14 kids that were here. We haven't even been to Watertown to present. We are going to present January 4th and invite them to our shadow, our Minuteman for a Day, our Shadow Day on the 11th. So I gotta feel pretty good about that. I always said, I mean, we get 14 without trying, what can we do if we try? So, and Wayland, Wayland's coming here Thursday. They're bringing a dozen kids to kind of check us out a little bit. You know, they, so we did go, this was on a Sunday, and we went to Wayland Friday at 1:30. So we were their last class on Friday, and yet we did get, I don't know. The fact that we got any kids out of there was pretty good, I thought, for that short kind of turnaround. And these are kids that come, obviously, there are 17 of them from just towns that, you know, they're not coming. They're not going to be able to get here, more than likely. We, sometimes we process these, our standard answer to them is that we're very sorry, you know, you have your own local program, that's where you need to go. We send that email, we have that conversation on the phone, and then we wait, and if they call back, we say, okay, well, if you're really game, here's the process, you can come in, I'll give you an interview, I'll give you the Chapter 74, it is now your job to go get it signed. You petition your superintendent, I don't have time for that. But you can do it, and we'll see. And every now and then, we might get some random, I don't know, kid from Reading, who knows? Yes?
Question for either George or Ed, is Newton sort of in a special category?
No.
Nope?
I mean, they have their own Chapter 74 program.
But it's fairly narrow, right?
They have six, I believe.
They have enough to deny kids access here, but this is one of those, okay, if they change the superintendent, it could all change. However, they have let kids come here for cosmetology, for example. I think we have three of them, you know, so, okay, but you never know. So I think that's why they're here, because we've got a good little, yes?
Wellesley sort of disappeared from this list.
Yeah, I don't know. I got one call last year from Wellesley. I had, they came in for the interview, we gave them the Chapter 74, and then they called back and, you know, well, you know, special education needs and blah, blah, blah. Hey, whatever, that's, that's fine, I know. I don't really know why. We advertise a little, we do an ad with Tri-County that kind of covers that area, but I don't know. So it's just another look at the data, oh, I'm sorry, yep, yep.
It's just a processing question. If somebody's approved to, say, come for cosmetology, comes, does the exploratory, and decides they want to do biotech, do they get pulled out?
Sometimes.
Is that, okay.
Yeah, often, often more the case now, that that, they would. Especially if they have it at their local place, so.
But if they don't, do they get pulled out, I mean, is there something?
If they don't have it at home, they can continue to finish their four years.
Yeah, yep. Let's see, so just another way to look at the data, right here. So this is good, 84% of the kids that came were in eighth grade, which is, which is good, because that's really our target audience, that's what we're really driving towards, so that means we're effectively getting that message out. We asked them a couple of survey questions, so I'm just going to highlight some of them. They could only choose one from this list. I think this is telling, so the, one answer, how did you find out about this event? And so you can see, you know, radio, mailing or a flyer, so we, you know, we do all this stuff with direct mailing, okay. Lawn sign, pretty good, we only had 100 signs out there, so that's pretty good, actually. Online, 8%, so some kind of social media going to our website. But the biggest one by far was My Child's School, which means what we usually are doing is we're sending a flyer and some information to the principals, to our contacts in the guidance office, and saying, could you, on our behalf, please push this out to your clientele, through your listserv, through your announcements, however it is you do it. And I think that shows that they've been cooperating at a pretty high rate, yes.
Do you know which towns they were from?
I could break that down, yeah.
That would be very interesting.
Yeah, I could break it down.
And just to clarify, it is the parents who are answering this question?
Primarily, yeah, because they're the ones registering their kids for the event. So it's primary coming out of that. Word of mouth is the next big one, and that was all, you know, my brother went here, my neighbor talked about it, you know, some kind of comment that they could, they could type in if there was another. But what's good about this is, you know, the principal at Lexington High, Lexington Clark really explained it really well. She said, you know, if, the reality is, if you send an email from Minuteman, delete, but if it comes from my account with my name on it, they're going to click and open it. She's like, so I'm happy to send it out for you. That's great, that works, so, and it is working. Another question was, you know, talk about what programs, why are you here? What are you most interested in? So I just gave you the top 10, they could pick multiple programs. You know, we want to know what's driving kids in here. So number one, engineering, design and visual communication, robotics, right up there. These were a tie between programming and web and environmental science. And there's no real surprise there. I would describe these more as the kind of the white-collar shops, and I think that appeals to our demographics. But you can kind of, multimedia engineering, pretty healthy right there, they were busy. And that's without the theater and everything else. I can only imagine when that theater is up, and they see that, it's going to be a lifestyle change for all of us, well, how big that's going to get, yes.
I'm just curious, no building trades?
No, you get carpentry down here, yep, carpentry down here.
But plumbing and, which is, which is a big program.
Yeah.
Electrical and plumbing are full.
They're always full.
But I think those kids, so I think those kids already know, so they might not even show up, I mean, the decision's already made, yeah.
Yeah. The difference is, we have a lock on those kids, because if you want to do electrical, we're in. You're not getting that at AB Dover, that, what, that, we're here. However, a parent will get their curiosity roused, because they do kind of think, well, wait a minute, we get some AP computer classes? Whoa, I got to understand, well, how's this compare? I got to know. So I think we drive more parents in that way. Okay, so this is our Minuteman for a Day, we used to call it Shadow Day. We don't really have kids really hang on one particular kid anymore, it's really a group effort. And they come in and they experience like what a full day is. So it's not just being in the shop area anymore, they're seeing academics, they're seeing some of our academic electives, because we want them to have a full spectrum here of what we do. So last year, we had 45 kids come to our December 1. This year, we're up at 57, as we continue to go over the data and what we got. Last year, we had 31 in January, we already have 30 signed up already. And, you know, I think when we go to Watertown, we're going to watch this, yeah. It's probably, I think it's even higher, because that was 12-10. Do you have a number on that, Maggie, do you have a ballpark? 34, alright, so we're already at 34, so that's, we're gonna, that's good, yes.
What percentage of the 2017 kids who went to a Shadow Day came to the school?
I have a slide coming up that gives you a little bit of an insight into that. That's deeper data analysis, I'll give you a little taste of that, but that, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I can give you a kind of an explanation of what we do do, we're processing. So just so you can see, so for that day, this is in-district, and the kids who, where they came from. So we have the greatest representation from Arlington, and then you can work your way across, you can see who came. However, we, we open up the experience, so we also get kids from out-of-district. And so here's just a, we didn't break them up this time between, I didn't want to make a million different slides, you get the idea, but they're out-of-district here, of kids who come. And again, Watertown, pretty healthy here, Newton. Hopefully, there's no change or there are no surprises. So this is kind of a little bit leading to what you're talking about, because this is some of the meta-analysis we do. So if you look at the prospects, how many have attended more than one event, and what events did they attend? So three events, Showcase Day, we've only had three events. So if you came to Showcase Day, Open House, and Minuteman for a Day, that's 20. Now, I can tell you historically, if you go to any set of three events, you, there's an 84% chance you're going to be here on October 1. So typically, we don't, I've never seen this kind of data, to be honest with you. We usually don't get that third one until Dinner with the Teacher in April, or maybe New Student Orientation in May. So we're in ridiculously good shape as far as that goes, because if you look, we've got all the kids that have already been to two events. That's Showcase Day and Open House. So if you're one of these kids, by definition, Showcase is only for in-district. So that means 106 kids are up here, that's, you're up to 68% likelihood of being here in the fall. And if we get them to one more event, we're bumping it up almost 20% in terms of likelihood of them being here. So Showcase Day, Minuteman for a Day, and Open House and Minuteman for a Day. So we're, part of what Maggie and I are doing, are now that we know, we know who all these kids are, so now it's tracking them down, sending them emails, giving them calls, how you doing? You know, have you applied yet? Because these are really, represent the hottest prospects that we have. So this is good, another great sign of health here, Jim, yeah.
George, are the 20 that are three events included in the 106?
No.
Wow.
Yeah, that's what I mean, like, this is, that's a separate, separate category altogether. That's why we have the, yeah, four different categories of kids. So we're in, that's good, that's good. Anyway, it justifies the fact that we run all these events, which is something that we get a lot, well, are they working, are they effective? Yeah, I always think that they're effective, but here's some proof of why. And I know that once we get to that third, that magic three, if you get to four events, it's like a 95% chance you are going to be here. So, you know, we're on, we're almost on the green for a lot of these kids, yes.
What if you had some two events? So it's 84%.
68, 68%. So that's good, but if we can bump them up, and we, the nice thing is, we have two more great, we still have another Shadow Day coming up, we still have Dinner with the Teacher coming up, and we have Orientation coming up. So we have three more big events that we know of, and we've talked about, a little bit has to do with the building and how that project goes. We have talked about the idea of doing some kind of sneak peek, you know, for kids who have applied and are in the system, like, hey, maybe someday in March or April, come on over, come on over on a Saturday, we'll give you some breakfast, we'll walk on over, you'll get to see the building, you know, welcome to the family kind of thing, and see if that generates a little bit more buzz. Maybe we'll do something kind of private, maybe do something kind of public too, I don't know. We only have one chance to try it, so we might as well try it, if we can, if it doesn't screw up the building project, you know.
Yeah, that's right, and I wouldn't do one, I'd do two or three, I mean, I, we can make it happen.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll be here.
Okay, you can give the tour. Absolutely.
Look around his golf.
Any ques, Jim, do you have a question? No, so then I just did a little of Facebook slide, because I'm proud of the work we've done. Like I said, 2015, we were just sitting up there in IT, and I took it over, we got Allison Berry involved, and now, you know, we're up here. So that's 600,000, that's just the third quarter alone, third-quarter comparisons. So we're getting almost, that means it's showing up in someone's feed. Someone's liking it, and if they're on Facebook, they're opening up, and then boop, there comes a thing about Minuteman. 600,000 times in a quarter, that's, compared to this? You know, we weren't even near 100,000? You know, that's a massive increase, yes.
You're doing a great job, because every day you're putting something in. Almost every day you have something new.
That's Allison Berry, she's doing a great job.
It's terrific. And there probably should be other things that we should be doing. Really good.
Yep, it's healthy, it's good, yes.
So that's not just one very enthusiastic Minuteman person doing it. As I was, I was going to mention to you Ford, but I'm.
That would be, you'd have to be very enthusiastic. Yes, Mr. Murphy, yes. Thank you for your attention and time, and I'll be here to answer any more questions.
Thank you, George, very much. And would you like to introduce the additional liaison who has come in?
Mr. Murphy from Belmont is our other parent liaison, welcome.
And we look forward to supporting, supporting your work. I'm sorry, what, I was going to say something else. Supporting the work of the liaisons and hearing from all of you about what we could do to back you up and go forward with this. And thank you very much for applying and for being accepted.
It's great. Penn?
Well, the other point we wanted to, I wanted to get some more pointed feedback, was about a scope of work. I think there was a potential scope of work on branding and marketing, and Ford has brought this up a number of times. We want to move forward with developing a scope of work, and I wanted to get some comments from other than Ford about your, the, you know, the sense of the committee of that effort.
Ford, why don't you just share what you've expressed a couple of times?
You know, I think from my observations, George and Maggie and the school is doing an outstanding job. So I think what they need is more support and more help. And I think we need to provide that. And one mechanism, obviously, is bringing in a firm like we had a firm, and bringing in a firm that can help us with branding, that can help us with marketing. There was one firm that was in the packet. I sent to Ed another firm that I recommended, only because I Googled around and I found it, and then I find out that they've done business with, I don't know, 100 and some odd, 125 schools and colleges. Most of them in the private world, and I think that's what we need to think about. And Maggie, I know, has come for that, and I think we need to think about how they market themselves, and they need to, you need to market yourself, not on a one-year or two-year, it goes on forever. And I just think we need to be able to do that, and that will provide them with a chance to maybe overcome some of the theories, and I get this in Dover all the time, Minuteman, you know, we've had two unanimous town meeting votes for Minuteman. It is a great school for those kids that aren't going to college. And I think that's a bunch of stuff. And I just think that we need to change the perception of CTE schools throughout the state, but at least through, and I don't think it's just our district, I think it's for our whole geographical area, that, because that's who is going to send kids to the school. So I think that's one thing that can help, and I think it's through, it's going to be through advertising, whether it be through whatever it is, television, radio, that kind of thing. I know you did some radio this year on iHeartRadio. I didn't hear it, but I gather that had some success. They can't do that, I don't mean that in a bad way. They need to have help and do that. So I mentioned to the Finance Committee, and I've mentioned to other people, I feel very strongly that we should put at least, and I don't know what the number is, and this is coming off the top of my head, but $100,000 in this year's 2020 budget. And then that could be worked on, and how are you going to spend that money? But I'm saying $100,000 has to go in that budget, But I'm saying $100,000 has to go in that budget and it has to be used for, basically it's enrollment that we're thinking about, but it's changing the perception of CTE schools in our communities. And it's only going to come by 12 months a year of hammering away at doing that. So that's my theory and that's fed for this second.
Allison, then Carrie.
Can we get some background on what this document is? Was there an RFI, was, what is this?
We just asked them, what, what kind of work do you do for others as an example? So we can see what a scope of work looked like. We didn't. At this point, we would have to do that and go through the procurement process.
But it's the theory, you know, it's, it's, at least we're thinking about it and I think that's important.
Carrie and then Jeff. Alice, did you get your, the answer to your question?
Yes. Whether it's a question or a comment, I think there's two things going on Ford and you touched on the second. It's not just about Minuteman, it's about the image of vocational education statewide or on a, on a general basis. That if, if people become aware, especially young parents and employers, become aware of what CTE education is doing today, not what it did 20 years ago, but what it's doing today and what it's capable of doing over the next 20 years. I think it will be an easier sell for the guidance counselors and admissions officers for, because so many parents are thinking about what used to be, when, when it was, when they were the student making the choice and, and not what their responsibility and the opportunities are for their choice with their kids.
Jeff and Sue and then Pam.
So going back in my time machine, we have attempted to do that sort of thing a number of times over the last 20 years. And those efforts have not been highly successful because we don't have the resources to create the kind of intense campaign that would be necessary to do traditional marketing. So I'm skeptical that traditional marketing or traditional marketing company will help us achieve our goals with the kind of resources that we have. I'd say rather look at the special things that we have that might be useful that we are not leveraging as much as we have been able to. And one example is these parent liaisons, which I think is going to help us activate the parents within our district. That's the kind of marketing campaign that's non-traditional. And there's some other equivalent areas that we could do. There's, as was mentioned over here, improving our visibility in the member towns. Because if somebody sees that Minuteman name again and again and again, it's just basic human nature. You start to take it seriously. If you see it again, it occurs, it borrows a path in your brainwaves. You start to say, well, maybe Minuteman really is something that is acceptable because I've seen that name in so many different places recently. There's activating our alumni network. I don't think we do enough work with our alumnis to bring them in because after all, those are our success stories. You want a parent to understand that somebody from Minuteman can be successful, here's the evidence, we need to put it in front of them. There's also activating our business partners, getting them to do more, to be agitators in town or communicators in town, because they're our partners, right? They should have an interest in the school. Perhaps there's some things that they can do. So those are all areas of marketing that we could bring to us, that's more targeted to us than a company like this, this is kind of traditional marketing, which they don't, may not understand us in the least. It's not to say that some of this stuff may not have value, but I'd be skeptical about putting our, all our money into traditional marketing and putting all our energy there rather than some kind of new idea of marketing that would be effective for us. I'm certainly not afraid of spending the money on it. I just want to make sure that we're targeting our money in a way that's going to be effective for us.
Okay, Sue and then it was Pam, I believe, and then Ford.
Yeah, I mean, I'm.
Oh, sorry.
I, I agree with Jeff and I would go further and say, you know, we know that all politics is local. Certainly all families having kids making decisions, that's a very local issue and trying to change the overall perception, perception of CVTE, I think is not going to have a good return on investment and it looks like it hasn't in the past and I don't see how we could ever, what's that?
Not our investment.
Not ours, okay.
No, I'm not talking about our investment.
I would like to see us take an approach that's really targeted to the 20% of families in Arlington or wherever that have a really good chance of understanding and appreciating what we're talking about. There's a lot of families that will never get it, don't want to get it. So somehow being able to understand who it is we need to be talking to and then tailoring our marketing to those people, what do they want? That's my thought. It's, it's changing the image, we're not going to change it for everybody, we can't, it's just not, I, I don't think it's realistic, but we sure can change it through, what are we calling these, community?
Liaison.
The parent community, yeah. I thought those, those are really effective people, you know, and they're talking directly to folks that are listening because they're ready to listen. So I agree with Jeff.
I was going to go next to Pam, but George had, I think wanted to add something, so we'll let you jump in, George, if you don't mind.
Sure. The, in the packet, just to, because the question was raised, the reason why we have that in the packet is we, Maggie and I attended a conference of other vocational schools in the state and the whole conference focus was on admissions and marketing and all of that. And so we all kind of got in a room and, sorry, it's awful. And in going through other people's materials that we saw, one really stood out, you know, we really liked what we saw just from pamphlets and the rest from Southeast. I, I like what they have. So we found out who did it and that was this, this woman, Kristy Valley. So originally we met with her to talk about, you know, we just need some new materials. This stuff is a little bit dated, we want to refresh. We got a new building coming up, how are we going to maximize that? And then in the course of talking with her, you know, she also does websites, she redesigned the whole website at Anna Maria College. She also does actually some interior design. So if you go to Children's Hospital, she's showing us all this work that she's done. So I, you know, oh, interior design, we have a new building too. Wow, interesting. So it seemed like she, that's why you got the proposal that you need, because we do need, we need to refresh our materials, that's just, we need to do it. We need a whole, we've been trying to generate our own, we have some great ideas of what we want, but we need somebody with that polished touch and dedicated just to that as a consultant because I don't, we can work with people here, but that's a slower process, need someone who can do that. The second thing is that website redesign. I know we talked about it, we put a little lipstick on the pig frankly this, this fall to, to change it up, but I want a website that features the high school, that has an admissions focus throughout the entire thing. And it's got to be dedicated just to the high school. So we've talked about the strategy of, what we really need are four independent sites that are linked. One that, you know, has the district as a house, one that has community ed, one that has MTI, and one that has the high school. Because parents are looking for information about the high school, they don't want to be bombarded with information they don't want. And we had a parent say that to us. So that's a really complex dense issue. Even when we were talking, she says, do you realize you have over 1,500 things you can click on on your website? She's like, that's, you know, one of people can't find things and they find it three different places. I, I get it, that's what happens when you have committees. Well, I want it up, you give me Ford, I think that should be on your page, it could be in your academics, it could be on the front page. I don't know, but I want an arbiter to kind of figure that out and tell me like, you know what? I've heard you all, here's where I think it should go. Thank you very much. So she may or may not be the person I, I really liked because she does have familiarity with vocational schools, she's, that's, she's got that in, she's got the private school thing that she's in with as well and she's, I, I don't know her whole workload, but I feel like this is someone, yeah. She can be mine or ours.
I think that, I, thank you for explaining how that particular packet or company came into the packet, but just to, I think, remind people that we're not necessarily here to, to pass judgment on that, on that particular offering, but it's an example of what, what's there. But it's the broader question about do we want, do we, that Ford has raised, do we want to support what George and Maggie are doing through, through a professional organization or whatever for marketing? So Pam and then we'll come around here.
Carrie.
Yeah, I'm coming around here. But Pam.
Just to follow up on George, you know, I was going to say is absolutely, I think, working with a company that can help us with our website, with materials and with something, I'm not sure what it's called, this could be branding. Looking at the materials that were in here, there was one thing that jumped out to me and, and not a positive way. Under the project goals, the first bullet, it says position Minuteman High School as the right choice school for those students interested in learning a trade, a craft or technology skills. And I'm like, that is so narrow. And we keep saying, that sort of thinking, well, that's what people think of, you know, vocational technical schools. And what we're trying to do is how do we, you know, finish that sentence as a right choice for those students in a way that is up to date, you know, that will have people looking at us differently and looking at us the way that we want to. And I think having some professional help to make sure that we have the language, the branding to really talk about when we say, we're not the same, we're not the, you know, vocational school of 20 years ago, that it's really clear, what does that mean?
Yeah, if we, I get the sense that if we were to go the route of having a consultant or whatever you want to call it, we would need to set the goals and the parameters of what we want to, them to accomplish as well, but hear from them about what their ideas are about reaching the public too. Carrie and then we'll go around to Alice and then Ford.
You touched on it, for some reason the initials are not coming into my head, but the, but offering continuing education, the credit for guidance counselors or teachers to come and learn, that's not something we're going to do, it's something we're going to push other people to do through DSE or whatever. I also wonder on that broad re-education reinterpretation, whether Mava has a voice there or an interest in doing something. I'm not saying that that's on our plate. Or, you know, George, to go out and change the world's attitude about CE to CTE. That's it.
Okay, Alice.
So I know of a couple of efforts, one is national and one is at the state level to try to increase the positive optics for CVTE. So, and, and clearly that's not our job to change the world, as you say. But in terms of the actual document here and, and what we would want them to do, I think there needs to be some, something in the RFI and RFP that goes out to ask them to do some analysis on the materials that George just gave us and the data to say, you know, if 67% of the contact, the decision-making is based on this, 67% is the child's school. Like a lot of the things that they're going to provide are not going to address that. It's getting, getting into that place somehow. It isn't going to be necessarily with a flyer. So they should do some analysis of the actual demographics of our constituents and, and how they come to be here and what the characteristics are of the kids who come here and the kids who, where are those other kids who are like them but don't come here? Where are they and how to reach them? And it may, I was actually thinking about that slot in particular, if, you know, 2% of them are coming in through the radio or whatever, the radio announcement, but they're all, all of the Arlington kids are hearing about on the radio, then that's really important to keep the radio spot. So we really, that's really important to understand that. So I think that the analysis is very important and it might drive the decision on which print-related materials to even bother designing. If, and it's probable that it's actually going to be more electronic than print materials and mailings and so forth at this point in time. Most of the mailings I get are after the things have happened for, for almost everything, not this school, but in general. So I'd like to see the RFI and RFP include that and I, I also want to just remark that although, you know, this person has done good things for Southeast and, and you like them, the process still has to be the, the RFP process that is required of us, whether or not we like them.
Oh, of course.
You know, and we can obviously, it can obviously be worded to say that we, you know, we, we reserve the right to choose the firm that meets the needs of the district, but there may be others out there that have, you know, greater insight into the kinds of problems we have, I don't know. Anyway, those are my remarks, but I would like to see analysis before they design anything.
And I'm inferring from that, from what you're saying, that you would support using an outside firm to help us with marketing, getting.
Yeah, I would. I think, I think we have to. I don't, you know, as, as Jeff said, we've done this many times before. We used to have a very large budget for marketing. I remember one year when I think it was $187,000 or something, it was a huge budget for marketing.
They did a lot of media, print.
Lots of mailings, lots of mailings, but that was when people got mail.
Ford.
Ed Reddick.
Yeah, I'm not asking us to decide what firm we want now or asking us to decide what we want to do. I mean, I think I'm going to go to Jeff and say, we need to do everything you talked about and more, but two people can't do it all. They're, they're doing what they can do. All I'm saying is, is I think because we don't know what it is, but we're working on a budget right now, that we put $100,000 in that budget to do what we think is right. Now, if you go to a company called Edwards, that's edwardsco.com, you're going to see the process that they do. It's very, it's a little different than what I saw before, but it starts with the community coming together to work on a brand. So they're going out to the entire community, not just three or four people. They go out to the school committee, they go out to alumni, they get a total engagement and then they work from there out to come out with a process. And as I said, they're working with over 100, they've worked with over 100 schools, colleges, private schools phenomenally. I don't see any public in there at all. I didn't see any vocational, but I think we need to think outside of the normal public vocational thing, the way we're doing this, because we need to market the school the way we think it should be marketed. So all I'm saying is, don't sit and design what, whether Valley's good or whether Edward's good or whoever's good. We need to get in this budget right now, money so we can move forward. And that program needs to move forward, not for one year, two years, for the next 15, 20 years. It needs, you need to continually do it because when you lay back and you're happy with your success, you're going to lose in the long run. So you got to continue to do it. But we cannot just ask Maggie and George to do the whole, do it. They need to have professional help. So.
Okay.
I just say, let's talk about investing in Minuteman.
Jack and then I'll come back to school committee.
Thanks, Dave. I, I agree, I think we need to strike while the iron's hot. I've, I've mentioned this to Ed and to various people. If, if you look at it, we've done other marketing campaigns, I've been here for 13 years, I remember those. I don't think we put the time and the effort in, to be honest with you, to really look for someone. And, and right now we're a national blue ribbon school. I went out, I was fortunate enough to go out and receive that award on behalf of you guys in the district. They mentioned that you have to take advantage of this award right now and some money might have to be spent to get that out there. And we've done a little bit of that, but I think we could be, we could do better. Our MCAS scores again this year were great. We're going to walk into a brand new building in eight months. I mean, we have a lot of things to be proud of and a lot of great things happening, but I agree with Ford. You know, George, the last time I looked at his resume, he wasn't a salesman. And, and mine too. I mean, I love being principal here, he loves being assistant principal, we have Maggie. We do what we do to sell the school because we love Minuteman. But it's not necessarily what, what we're trained to do, but we do it because we want kids here. And I think sometimes by doing all this other stuff, it kind of takes away from what we're really supposed to do in the building, which is be with kids and help train staff and make sure our curriculum's up to date. And we, we try to do all that, but we're trying to do all these other things too. And, you know, I just went out to High Tech High in New Jersey a couple of weeks ago, spent a day and a half out there. We got to see a brand new vocational school, public school in New Jersey, 1,200 kids. And Ms. Dempsey went off with a guidance counselor and Michelle went off with their CTE director and the principal said, Jack, who would you like to talk to? I said, I'd really like to talk to your marketing or admissions person. They said, we don't have such a person. They accept 300 freshmen a year and they have 1,800 freshmen apply. They accept 300 freshmen a year and they have 1,800 freshmen apply for those 300 seeds. But they just do things differently. They're a national blue ribbon school too, and they spent tons of money getting that effort out there years ago. That's only going to be around for, you can always claim that, but eventually, it's going to disappear. In five years, that brand-new school up at The Hill will be five years old. We have to, we have to strike now, in my opinion. And it can't just be George and Maggie. And when Ed came on 12 years ago, he probably didn't think he was going to be a salesman either, but we all are because we love this place. But I think something more has to happen. I really do.
Could I suggest, unless there's something absolutely that no one has, that's something new, that someone hasn't said, that we, we just, we talk about, I would hear sort of a consensus that we'd like to do, like to do something, that we look for some perhaps volunteers from the school committee to work with the administration on drafting an RFP. I don't know which comes first, money or the RFP, but let's, are we at that point where we're ready to? I don't think we need any more convincing. Let's talk about the next step at this point. Alice.
There's, oh.
Was I next?
I thought Alice was, then, you know, I'll come back to you. I haven't forgotten you.
So, just one thought that we need to address. This is all design work. So, let's say you did design the Minuteman overall viewbook at three grand. Just to print one copy, like, how much is that? So, there needs to be a budget that has all of the anticipated design work and all of the implementation of that. So, if it's mailings, how much does that cost? If it's a new sign for the outdoors, how does that cost? So that you can come up with the figure, because $100,000 is, to be fair, a random number. Then Ford just thought of.
That may be minimum.
It's a random number, and it would need to have a better number.
Well, wouldn't we need to decide what we want to see, what we'd like a firm to do, as well as hear from them, what they would do? And then we put, then we put in an RFP and then they come back and tell us, "This is what this is going to cost." Yes, Pam? I'm sorry? I meant to say Sue.
I know, I know. You've got a lot to do. I get that. Yeah, I feel kind of strongly about this. I have a lot of marketing background, and what I hear us talking about is two different things. One is marketing strategy, and the other one is the technical side, which is what I think this firm may do a really good job of administering, of managing. But we have to give them the message that we want them to create an image around. And it's, I, it seems to me we already kind of have the answer. We've got parents who are so enthused about the school that they're willing to go into their communities and convince other parents. They know something about what to say. After a month or two of doing this, they're going to know a lot more because they'll have the experience. I'm sure that the staff, George, you know, Jack, have a really good sense of what works, like, who comes through and stays. And I, I'm really glad to see the data that George came up with or created on No Time at All. Thank you very much. But that's what we need. We need to have a sense of what we already know. Then design, hire somebody to design the graphics and the website around that, do it a pilot for one year, then come back and with data, understand what worked, reinforce the stuff that worked, and move on, right? I mean, but I, the whole idea of, you know, saying, "Okay, money," I'm very worried about that approach if we don't actually know how we're going to get the image crystallized.
Jeff? Dave?
So, I agree that we should put aside the money, which we may or may not use for this effort. These are some things that are definitely cost money. Some of these are one-time things. Like, we all agree that we need to revise the website. That's a fairly expensive thing to do. That's theoretically a one-time thing for a complete revision of it. And then, of course, there's maintenance. Now, it isn't a one-time thing.
No.
No, it has to be ongoing.
It has to be ongoing, but your initial design is more expensive than your ongoing costs. So, no, you don't think so? I think so.
All right, let's, but keep going.
But the important thing is, is that, so, a company like this can do some things for us. They can't design all these new documents. That's fine. They shouldn't have to. We can have a firm to do that. But I also want to make sure that we don't lose track of other things that might cost us some money, like, like bringing in the alumni better than we have been, like, creating visibility directly. In other words, there are a lot of moving pieces here. And I don't think the biggest moving piece is the traditional marketing firm. That might be a part of it, but there are other things as well. So, we should understand that we're going to be spending a fair amount of money here. You want to put the money aside. We don't have to spend it all if we can't come up with a plan, but we know that we have some money available there for this, and we should get together and decide, what kind of documents do we need that this firm can help us with? How much will it cost to revise our website? What about, how many of these other ideas can we really implement and what kind of support we would need to do that? I have the list of all the things we've discussed about admissions over the last two years. And we have not had time to go through and consider each of those ideas, which ones have the most merit, which ones are affordable. And I think we need to have that discussion, and that's how we decide how to spend the money and how much of it to spend. So, I think, yes, we put aside the money. We have a discussion of looking at all the things we've discussed. How do we get the most bang for our buck?
Are you saying, are you saying we're not ready for an RFP?
I'm saying we are definitely not ready for an RFP.
Okay.
But we can be pretty soon. There might be a number of RFPs, because this company may not be able to do all the things. That may not be their specialty to do all the things on the list that we want.
Okay, Dave.
So, there's a couple of things that this conversation sparks with me. One, again, I think we need to talk about the strategy of, of what it is that we, we want to do. Branding is probably one of them. But one of the other things that Alice brought up is, is the strategy of how we communicate with people. And I don't want this to sound negative, but we're from a different generation, and, and the reality is, is that the economy as it is and the way we communicate is a digitally-native environment now. And our consumers or our, our constituents are consuming things digitally. So, if we're going to be looking at a long-term strategy, the paper consumer and the traditional marketing strategy that we used and have used in most of these marketing companies are applying to are antiquated. And I will tell you that the kids sitting in the seats in DVC and, and coming up through the ranks, they've all got websites, they've all got YouTube channels, they've all got digitally-native apps, and they're communicating and they are marketing themselves to each other and their brands. And we don't leverage our kids in our environment nearly enough. And the alumni network that we have in this business that have gone on and done extremely well and are now sitting in these platforms are a goldmine. And so, as far as putting up a website, these kids put up websites all the time, right? They could be managing our, our own website with guidance and oversight. And so, I mean, Ed, I see you shaking your head.
No, no. If you, I disagree completely that kids ought to be taking a major role in this. That's not what we need them here for.
No, but it could be part of, it could be part of the curriculum.
Our kids give us feedback on what we do all the time, and that's the extent to which I expect them to be used. George was saying, "When we tried to rely on kids, they don't do work quick enough. They're not in the business world yet. We're preparing them for that. We need to pay the professionals and get input from everybody and focus groups and whatever other means are possible." But I'm not going to use kids for things that are available to us professionally. If it's part of their curriculum, part of a work co-op job, that's fine. But I think it's just a myth I keep hearing all over the place that we can use kids to do all these things. I mean, it comes out, people ask me about the new building, "Well, what are the kids doing on it?" It's not the way the world works anymore. We, our kids are here to learn from us. I'm not going to utilize them in that way. I'm going to get their feedback, and we do.
But the alumni, but the alumni network who are in the professions.
The alumni network, we've, we've never had the opportunity to mind them as far as we could, but I agree with you.
I'm going to intervene at this point, because I think we, we need to talk about what the next step is. In other words, how are we, how are we going to take what we've heard today and, and operationalize it? Not, not talk, not talk about this concept or that concept, but how are we going to move forward for it? Go forward with it? Do we want a couple of people to work with, with the, with George among ourselves? But I think that's where, let's not talk about, where, should we use this or use that?
We have an enrollment task force there.
We need, we need to decide how to do it.
Wilson, middle.
Yeah. What, and, and I think Ed is saying this, you know, what the enrollment task force has been doing is looking at different activities, different things that we can be doing to help boost enrollment. I think that, that's something that, you know, we're certainly going to be continuing to do. We don't have another meeting set. What we can try and do is set up a meeting before our January meeting and, and at that point, go through and prioritize some of the, you know, various activities that we have talked about that will lead towards, you know, that will move this conversation along and be able to come back and talk about it at our January meeting.
A suggestion about what, what we're capable of doing, what the staff is capable of doing, and what, what we're not capable, so-called capable.
And what we want to hire professionals for.
Okay. Comments about that? Not, not about exactly what firm or whatever. I don't know who, I'll go Alice and Ford, and Jeff, with your hand up.
Maybe we could get someone from a couple of the vocational schools that have the waitlists to come to the enrollment task force and discuss some of the things that they've been finding useful. I mean, Southeast has used this, marketing firms, we could see some of what they have experienced. I don't know if they would be interested, but.
But that's the kind of comment that's appropriate right now. Thank you, Alice. Ford?
We are in the budget season. The budget is going to, when is the budget going to be done?
Public hearing is.
The first week of February.
So, by the first week of February, what's going to be in the budget is going to be in it. And what I'm hearing are lots of great ideas, lots of things that George and Maggie can do more of. God knows when they're going to do it. I'm hearing lots of things that we're going to do, volunteer. None of that is going to work. We've got to make investment in this, in increasing the enrollment and helping Minuteman. And I'm throwing it out again, and I am about to make a motion that we ask Kevin and the finance committee to look at increasing the budget for this kind of expenditure for $100,000. I didn't say do it, but just take, take a look at it. And I will also say, there are, there's one firm out there that I think is very non-traditional that's worked with well over 100 schools, edwardscow.com. I recommend you go to it. You're going to be able to spend a lot of time. They have a lot of information about how they work with institutions like this. And that's where I'm coming from, because I just did that over the last 24 hours. But more importantly, we're in a budget season. I think we've got to get some direction to Kevin and the finance committee to look at. And I don't know whether the number is 100 or 75 or 200,000, but what can we afford? And if we don't put any money in there, we're just going to continue doing what we're doing now. So, that would be my recommendation. I haven't made a motion yet.
With your hand up. Oh, Carrie.
If I need to.
Our shared microphone. The finance committee is meeting again on January 8th, and we can, we can talk about it some more then, perhaps have some, some options. It doesn't seem realistic with the holidays between now and then. It seems difficult to have an enrollment meeting, but I think we can, we can talk in, in general terms about an amount of money. I mean, we've, we've already talked about what the acceptable increase in the operating budget would be in the neighborhood of 3.4%, a little higher or a little lower. I think we can, we can work around that. But I think Kevin can work with staff to get some ideas for us. And Jim, next.
Jim, and then Jeff. And then we're going to wrap it up.
Yeah. No, I would, I mean, I think, I think the best way is to, is to have it go through the budget process. Just sort of footnote that it, that if, anytime during the school year, if we ever had an urgent crisis to do something, we do have a stabilization fund that the school, school committee could vote. But I think that, that's not the preferred way here, but just sort of note that.
Jeff?
Oh, I'm happy to put money aside for this. It doesn't mean we have to spend it all. So, you put the money aside so we know that we can draw on it. That's fine. I'm certainly in favor of that. And I believe it is appropriate for the enrollment committee task force to get the next bite at this apple, to try to come up with a framework of what things we should pursue and how much they're going to cost. I think that's something we can certainly do. The, the only, it's not even a warning I give, is that you cannot extrapolate on other school systems what's going to happen to us, because we have this unique issue of parents thinking the way that they think, which other groups do not have to deal with. So, I'm not convinced that what has worked in other, we should, of course, we should look at it, but I'm not at all convinced that what has worked for other districts is going to be effective here, because I think that the problem is pretty unique.
Okay. So, Pam, do you have a charge for the enrollment committee task force, I should say? In other words, what you're, what you will do? And tell me again, when you're, when, do you have a next meeting date?
We don't have a meeting date. Maybe we can set one at the end of this meeting.
Okay.
Because everyone's here. Yes.
So, there.
So, don't run out if you're on the enrollment task force.
Take, what, our next step really is in two parts. One, the finance committee will take a look at the budget, see what, how much money we could possibly devote to this by looking at the budget and whatever. No promises, but we'll look at it. And then the enrollment task force will do its work and we'll come together and see where we are. And we'll put it on the agenda for our January meeting. Is that, is everyone clear about that? Are you clear about that? Okay. Thank you very much. Lot of passion. Let's see, where are we moving along to Type A non-member town enrollment? I think that's where we are.
And the other thing we skipped over was a snapshot of the enrollment on data.
Yeah, I was going to mention that.
Start.
Yeah, you, we could start with that. We did get a snapshot, different, another snap, another snapshot from George. But to introduce the, the Type A non-member town enrollment, Jim can walk us through a bit through the, the snapshot of enrollment data in district, in district enrollment that he's provided us, that are in your packet, they're on pages six and seven. And they will, that will be a lead-in to the discussion about, to explore a partner-tuition agreement between Minuteman and a Type A non-member.
Fantastic.
I'm sorry, because I was late, did we do the overview of the in-district enrollment?
We didn't.
Do you want to?
Right, I mean, I mean, the tables.
Yeah, that's what I was saying now, that Jim will walk us through that.
So, so first of all, I, I would just like to thank Ed and John Camerata, the, the data specialist that George had referenced for providing this data on, on very short notice. And, and then on this first page, first, first two pages, it goes through a description of what the data is and, and then what those five pages of tables show. And, and so, there were, there were two spreadsheets. One is an anonymized list of the nearly 3,000 Minuteman graduates from 1999 through last spring, and it, and it has their year of graduation, their gender, their town of residence, and for the graduates of going from 2009 forward, their program of study. And then to complement that, to sort of get the best projection of, of who, who the graduates are for the next four years, that we took a look at the October 1st SIMS, SIMSOM data, the, the official roster we, we sent to the state. And, and that's our best guess as to who is going, going to be graduating for the next four, you know, four years, and it's with the same, same, same data. So, we've got a, a good, a good data set here. The first table gives you just. The first table gives you just sort of the numbers. If you take a look at Table 1A, that the columns sort of break the resident towns into eight different categories. And those first four years, those are the years of graduation. So 2022, that's our freshman class, our sophomore class, our junior class, and our senior class. And the other thing to note there is that the senior class was admitted before the new DESI rules came in. So there was access, there was much better access from the Type B towns from the Boston there. But the last three years have been under the new rules. And what I take.
Being exploratory.
Yes, yeah, that the ninth grade. And it shows up there in the column labeled Own Voc School and Member Regional Voc School. Those are the towns that are, kids from those towns no longer have access to our exploratory program. So you see that from 1999 through the graduating class of 2019, you know, those numbers have ranged from 13 to 58. And then now it's 5, 5, and 3. So those regs really have clamped down on the access. What I take away from this is that if you take a look at the last three years and just circle for each column, the highest number, which means that's an enrollment target that's practical, because we've already achieved it. You know, that totals 153. And if you multiply that by four, that gets you up to 6 at 12. And so just based on that, you know, I think, I think, I think the, you know, what we've all been saying is that, you know, give us a couple of years, the school is going to be filled. This is a hopeful thing from my point of view. The other thing is, for a lot of these tables, I've shown the gender breakdown, because when you take a look at other regional voc tech schools, Minuteman has had a higher male-to-female ratio. And just an idea for the Enrollment Task Force and for the administration is a more targeted outreach to some of the eighth-grade girls, something that is worth taking a look at. And any questions or comments on this first table? If you take a look at the second table, you know, and sort of do the same thing for the nine continuing member towns, take the high number for the past three years. That takes you from 96 to 110, which is a jump of 14 per class, multiply that by four, that's another 56 kids. So you can get a story where, you know, a 670 population school is within reach if what our best years become our normal years. The third table, this is not just the graduate table, but this is taking a look at the size of the class relative to the size of the local academic senior class as well. And so you can sort of see, there's a sense as to how many kids from that town are choosing to come to Minuteman. And of course, some of our towns have regional schools, and so they are pooled for, you know, for that. And it just sort of gives you a sense that it's, you know, that certain towns send, certain towns send a lot more kids here relative than the others. The one number that really jumped out at me was the Watertown number, and for this past year. And I think it, for me, it stresses how important access is to the eighth-grade class, because I think that was somewhat, you know, there was a transition last year at Watertown in the superintendency, and I think we might not have had the same quality access there that we might have had in previous years. Or maybe it's just a fluke, but it was a much lower, you know, yield from that eighth-grade class than you would see normally. And then the last two tables are showing it by program, not by town necessarily. And, you know, actually, the fifth table does show it by town, so you can get a sense as to the choices that your resident students make for the programs. For that Table 5, it's just for the graduation years 2017 through 2021. I thought that was more relevant than going back to 2009. And then also on Table 4, just the low female representation in the construction programs. I mean, I think that's something we know, but we can sort of see it here and point to it. So I think, I think this is data, I want to thank the administration for making possible, and I think it's just a reference to have for our work going forward.
Did you see any direct connection between, or I'm not sure if that's the best wording, of these data to what we're going to be, we're talking about next? But how does the data, how do these data, how have these data affected your pursuit of partner tuition agreements?
You know, we can talk about that when I get in, when I get into that memo. I mean, but if people have questions or comments just on the data itself.
Pam.
Just on Table 3, I think one of the numbers that we've thrown out, and I just want to clarify that this is what this is showing, that the percentage class, a reasonable number for us to shoot for is 6%. And I guess I just want to confirm that that's, is that the case? And if so, Nishoba's right on target.
Thanks to Lancaster.
Yeah. Arlington is above, but the rest of us have a long way to go.
Any other question about the data per se? Okay. Anything else you wanted to add? I was trying to make, create a nexus between the data and the next part.
Yeah. So then the. The segue is to the, you know, last topic here, which is Type A non-member town enrollment. And this is, this is a continuation of some of the Section 10B talk, but that really was sort of a finance-focused issue and talking about this, whereas this is really first, first really, an enrollment topic that will have a finance piece to it. And that's how I've chosen to sort of think about it. And so, turning to my memo that stated December 14th, you know, again, we're talking about Type A towns here. Those are the towns that don't have their own Chapter 74 programs, nor belong to a different regional voc tech school. There are currently eight Type A towns that have students in this year's school, and it's the six of Declan towns, Watertown, Watertown, and Everett. And then just looking ahead, if nothing changes, Belmont is going to become a Type A town in July of 2020. And from those nine towns, putting Belmont in that category, 129 students are here now, and 102 are going to be, I mean, are in grades nine through 11, meaning that that's the best guess about the number that will be here next year. Of those Type A towns, six of them are the Declan towns, the seventh is in Belmont, and then Watertown and Everett, as I said. And, you know, I think it's useful to take a quick look. I don't want to sink into, you know, going, living back what it was like when the Declan and declared and Belmont left. But I have gone back and listened to some of the transcripts and gotten some minutes from the towns. And what I was struck by was that in most of the Declan towns, and certainly in Belmont, there was a very vocal group within that town that wanted to stay. And they were, you know, I mean, we had parents stand up and say, this school was really important for my family, for my child. Other people said it was important to be part of a regional group. That we know that all those seven towns voted to leave, but I think it's important to understand that there, you know, that it wasn't a slam dunk in most of the towns. And then for those that I heard leaving, there were lots of different passions there. But in every town, a lot of the conversation came back to the numbers and the fact that there's a financial advantage under the current playing field for a town to be a non-member versus a member. And so there was always talk, and it was sort of, always came back to say, well, the people who wanted to leave didn't believe that the school would fill up. And so it gets to enrollment. We still don't, I mean, the facts haven't changed that much since then, but we certainly hope that they're going to change soon as the new building and all this work happens. But that's still what we're dealing with, with these nine Type A towns. Going to the second page to Dave's point here, just first taking a look at the Declan towns, this is how they stack up for the, you know, for the four grades currently here. And what's really striking to me is that, you know, every class came in under different circumstances. You know, that the 12th graders, that the new regulations were just coming out. The 11th graders were going through the application process, just as the special town meetings were voting whether to leave. The 10th graders came in as the last year that their town was going to be a member. And the 9th graders came in the first year that they were non-members. And that the numbers for the 9th grade class are way lower than the other three classes, even though the towns are now paying much less than they would if they had an assessment. And so I think, I mean, what I'm sort of guessing is that it really shows that access trumps price. You know, I mean, that if your, that if your kids are not going to have, if the 8th graders don't have the same sort of access and support to the admissions process, that they're more likely to do. Whereas if you thought, well, price really matters, we would think that the Declan town enrollment may rise, because it's a cheaper forum to come here. But that's not what I'm saying here. So I don't know if you want me to stop, and if people want to talk about that or not.
Well, I'm sure people do.
Yeah, okay.
And to explore.
Yep.
Whether or not we want to, we want to have partner tuition agreements.
But I haven't gone into all of that.
Are you just made up to this point?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I mean, there's a quick question on the Declan's.
Sorry.
I have a, what I hope is a quick question, but not specific to the Declan's.
Yeah, okay.
My question is, does your focus here on partner agreements with these communities replace or supplant or postpone what you were talking about with trying to get approval for higher tuition through DESI?
Yeah. That I'll get to it soon, but I mean, the quick answer.
I just want to know what I'm supposed to be paying attention to, really.
I see it as a complimentary tool, and it's a, so it's both. Okay? But I'll get to it more. I mean, that you want a short answer, the answer is complimentary. If you want the longer answer, I'll get there in about a couple of minutes. Okay?
Okay.
Jeff, did you have a question?
I have a number of. I have a number of comments, but I read the whole document, so my comments are kind of the whole thing.
So wherever they fit in.
I mean, so we have the Declan's.
Yeah, okay.
So we have the Declan's, and then we have Belmont and Watertown. And Belmont and Watertown really are, I think, different from the, you know, from the Declan's in the fact that they send a larger class every year. And that they're, you know, that we're, that we know that Watertown is at least willing to think about being a member. We know that the superintendent in Belmont has supported the work of the group in town that has said, you know, that Belmont is better off being a member. And so there's, you know, that I just sort of note that when we're talking about these nine towns, I think the Declan's and Belmont Watertown may be in different categories in terms of how we're thinking about them for the long term. So as Dave has talked about, you know, is there an alternative path for these non-member towns? You know, right now, we have the members, we have the Type As, and we also have the Type Bs. You know, sort of looking back on some of the other conversations we had, and I think there's wide dissatisfaction with where we wound up with the DESI regulations that were put into place at the end of February 2015. Even DESI says that was a compromise. When you, when I take a look at them from the Type A town point of view, I see that we have some authority under state law that's not fully recognized in terms of our tuition setting. In terms of the Type B, those regulations clearly have hurt and cut off access for the 9th graders from those towns who should be, I mean, who, you know, who could be here. So I think, I think both of those are very valid concerns we should have with the DESI regulations. And to sort of think about that, you know, it's, in both cases, it's DESI having the final say, sort of a unilateral say about how the school is run. And there is another path, at least with the tuition and the Type A towns, and that we could create a bilateral way of working with the Type A towns. These are the towns that don't have any other vocational school to fall back on, that they belong, that they own. And I'm calling this the partner tuition agreement, which would be a bilateral, a bilateral school committee to school committee agreement. And that the five sort of high-level things that I take away from it is that, you know, this is a tuition agreement that's already recognized within state law, and that DESI has already said within its regulations that if there's a tuition agreement in place, it takes precedent over their unilateral tuition setting powers. The other thing is for us to recognize that a partner is not a member and is not bound to the regional agreement. It doesn't have the claims on the assets. It doesn't have the debt, and other than what they, what some of the former member towns had under their past agreement with us. And so that sort of takes away some of the concerns from the towns who had left about the liability there. What could be in it for us is that the partner would have to declare Minuteman as their preferred school, and sort of, and make that commitment, and make sure that they gave our school the same access to their 7th graders and 8th graders that we look for from the member towns. And if it worked out, I would think that we would want to consider seeing if we could change the admission policy to give the partner towns priority over other non-member towns who don't say that they want to be partners. You know, they would still rank second behind the members, but to have something there that would be a value for that. And I think just on these non-financial terms, you know, I think, I know that within Belmont, they would, they would like to be, they would like to have this kind of partnership, or at least be willing to talk about it within their school committee. When it gets down to the finance side, I mean, that the question then is, you know, how much is it going to cost? And for the capital charge side, I think what we've got in place for non-members works just fine, because it says, it says that the average cost of the debt service per kid is what we would charge them. I think certainly the Declan towns would view that as a much better deal than what I think certainly the declarant towns would view that as a much better deal than what the regional agreement is that had, that had them paying 1% there. I mean, I mean, Ford, I took a look at what Dover is going to be assessed for capital this next year. It's going to be $50,000 for zero, zero, you know, for zero students. I think Weston wasn't willing to pay that, and, and I'm glad that Dover, Dover was.
Be supportive.
Yeah, exactly. On, on the, on the operating tuition, right now, you have, you have DESI letting us charge their rate, which is around $17,000 or $18,000 plus a sped charge on top of that. You have, you have all these conversations we've had about the section 10, 10B, which would say, you know, our, our policy in the regional agreement is to charge the average cost, which is, you know, 30, 30 to 32,000. And, you know, you would, you would think maybe, maybe there's some middle ground there that, that would be, that, that this, and this, and this would have to be part of the negotiation once, you know, once we got into it, once we realized that the non-financial pieces of a partnership would make sense for both, both sides, just finding, finding what the, what the tuition rates would, would work. And in, and in that context, going ahead with a proposal to DESI to set our own tuition for the type A towns that, that is recognized within state law, 7C, but we would have to get the commissioner approval on that. Going ahead with that, if we got, if, that if we got approval on that, I think that would just make our bargaining hand stronger in terms of trying to come to some, some accommodation on, 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 on tuition. So that's, so, so the recommendation, I'll, I'll wrap up now and toss it out. You know, I, I view this as trying, as trying to reconcile with some of these, some of these towns who have left and, or, or towns who, who have chosen not to join us. I think, you know, I think it's, I think it's a path worth, worth taking a look at. And I, I talked with Dave about having a vote, about just doing some more work to, to, to start talking with one or more of the type A towns to, to see if this is, this is something worth, worth following through on and, and seeing if there actually is a, actually is some kind of agreement.
You've been poised with your pen.
Curious, would we be negotiating individually with each town or would we be negotiating with all of them at the same time?
I mean, I think, I think, I think, I think we would do it on a, I think we would, I mean, each, each tuition agreement is a bilateral between, between this committee and a single school, school committee. So it would be on a one-by-one basis. I think we should anticipate what we want to offer, offer that. And maybe, maybe if, if it ever got to a point where we voted on it, we would, we would bring a whole package of whatever towns wanted to, wanted to think about it, to have a, to have a, to have a vote at the same, same meeting.
Just, just quickly, off the top of my head, I think if these towns aren't willing to pony up and join the district, I'm not sure I'm interested in them. You know, you're either a member or you're not a member. And if you're coming in and we're negotiating individually, so we're going to do one deal for Watertown, another deal for Belmont, another deal for Sudbury, God help us, or Whalen, I mean, I, I just, my attitude would be very different, quite frankly, today, sitting and negotiating with each one of those towns, just from a psychological point of view. Some of them I wouldn't want to negotiate with. So that's just me.
Sure.
So I, I just think you're either in or you're out.
Okay, okay. I think, I, I think you want to, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to look forward with what we have to, what we have to work with now and, and, and not, I mean, not get, I mean, I mean, where we are now. So I think, I think it, and, and, and so I, I would think that Belmont and Watertown are, you know, that if you take a look at it, I think they are really good candidates to become, become members because, because they're sending lots of students here. It's important to them. And that, that I think they need a path to be able, to be able to come on back there. And so, and so I would view that as, you know, this is, this is a, a, a way to create a path that would take over maybe, maybe a, several years that would, that would then get them, get them ready to figure out that. I think with the declarants, if they're only sending one or two kids, you know, I think it's, I mean, I mean, that if we get collectively 50, 50 kids from the declarant towns, it's not a big thing for any one town. And, and if we could get another, you know, six to 8,000 per kid, that actually becomes some serious, serious I do. So, so I would, you know, I mean, $8,000 times 50 is $400,000. That's, you know, that's four years of $100,000, $100,000 line item in a budget. So.
We'll go around the table if, in that, in that regard. So Alice, and then Carrie, I think you had, and then we'll just go around the table, if we may. I thought your hand was up, that's why I said that.
I'm concerned about the frisky negotiations that we've had in the past with the declarant towns and the concept of having an agreement, which then, you know, there's something about the agreement that isn't quite agreed to. And then there's some disputes and then there's, you know, that kind of thing. And the, the idea of having a document that would be adhered to by both sides, it's, it's escaping me exactly how that would work right now, just, just from the historical experience that we've had. I'm looking at the table 1A and just looking at the continuing members, it's, it's not very far into the packet. And if you look at the, just the continuing members, starting in 2019, there's a steady, a nice little growth pattern there. So I can envision personally, you know, a place where there isn't actually room for the kids from these other towns and it's just member town kids. I totally see that on the horizon very soon, especially because it's a new building and because of the kinds of numbers that we were seeing attending the open house from some of the towns. I mean, my own town sent 49 kids to, it's like half the class. So, and that, those were voluntary attendees, but they weren't sent, they just appeared. So I think I'm, I'm not too worried about, for the district, and my main concern is for the district. I understand the problems that Belmont, the declarant towns, Watertown have in not having their own vocational school, but they could join this vocational school and then they would have one.
Carrie?
Okay, I'm going to touch on a, on a couple of angles here. First and forward following on what you were talking about with the difficulty, the challenge or the pitfalls of, of trying to negotiate separate agreements with up to six or seven different communities. I think that, I, I agree with you on the, on the caution there, although I don't necessarily object to, in principle, to having a category of non-member, you know, a three-year term agreement or four-year term, if that's, you know, how long it takes to get a kid through high school might make more sense, that has, you know, we would offer this and you commit to that and you're in or you're out. I think that that might appeal to the, to the smaller towns, such as Carlyle and Lincoln and Boxborough, by the way, each of which happens to be the much smaller community in, in a district for the regular academic. The other thing, and the reason I asked the question before, is that I feel.
Would you state your question again?
Hmm?
Would you state your question?
It wasn't, it wasn't really a question. Oh, you mean my, my earlier question?
Yeah.
My earlier question was whether this proposal that he's making now replaces, supplants or postpones his discussion, Jim's discussion earlier about asking DESI to approve a higher tuition for type A towns.
Okay. All right. Just to cut that clear.
Which.
Me.
I won't go into a lot of detail right now because we've, we've had some discussion on that, but I find that counterproductive in the long term and perhaps also in the short term, where we're trying, we as a district and certainly the administration are working on the access issues for kids from non-member towns. And the, I have read the memo that was written in response to, you know, would, would the commissioner be likely to approve this higher tuition? I think it's unlikely, but I also paid attention to the rationale, which had to do with access from, from less affluent communities, less, you know, the students who, for whom it may be even more challenging and even more difficult for their superintendent to approve them to come here, even if the regulation is changed, if the tuition that they're sending community would have to pay because of the resources that are available and the responsibility of that superintendent to all of their students, the ones that go there and the ones that, that go, who can justify going out of district. And the studies that have been done, but not updated on what happens to the average cost per student if we are at full or better than full enrollment is as convincing to me as the argument that let's charge $5,000 more per student that, that comes from out of district. So that's, that's sort of where I am. I'm, I'm not objecting in principle to a second class, something between out of district and, and member community, but I think it should be simple and straightforward and, and if we choose to do it, not muddy the waters with, with other initiatives.
Pam?
One of the things I'd like to hear more about, doesn't have to be tonight, but at some point, is how doing the partnership agreement would help move communities like Watertown and Belmont onto the path to being members. Because I would want to make sure that we're not doing something that actually makes it comfortable for them not to be a member, you know? So I just, again, I, I just would like to have more discussion at some point because you're saying you think that it would be a pathway. And I, I want to hear and see a little more about how that would be and making sure, again, it's not, wouldn't be preventing membership or an incentive not to.
I'm not giving you notes.
Okay.
So I think.
Thank you.
Regardless of how we go forward, if you don't get DESI's permission or, you know, authorization to give priority to these towns that you're trying to make an agreement with, it's a non-starter.
I mean, I mean, you were saying that if, that if DESI doesn't.
Allow us to give priority.
Allow us to charge. No, 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 we're talking.
No, no, not the, I'm not talking about, no, because it says, if permitted, Minuteman will give priority in admission to applicants from partner districts. If you can't get that, it's a non-starter. Because I think that's the one thing, as the building fills, that's the one thing we have, is the seats. Is that, do you see what I mean? Do you have any idea what DESI's opinion on that is?
No, 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 and I haven't, I mean, because, because, because I am all, I can talk about, talk about my, talk about, talk about my response in more detail later because it's tied into some other things. But I, I put that in there. I think, I think that's a nice to have. I, I mean, I disagree that it's a, that it's a must-have, I think, but.
But what's their incentive if they aren't getting priority?
Okay, okay. The incentive is tied to the tuition that, I mean, I think, I think that, I think the, I think the most important thing is to get DESI approval to, to, to let us charge these towns, these type A towns, a, a higher tuition rate. And it's, and it's, and it's not, I mean, I, I mean, I would come here with a tuition proposal that only affected the type A towns. I think the type B towns is, is, is a different whole question we have, you know, that we want to keep working on the access questions there. And I think that trying to raise tuitions on type B towns would be counterproductive to the, to the access issue we're trying to get there. And it's also not as clear in the state law whether we have any kind of authority in it. So, so this is strictly a type A town. And so, and so, and so if, if DESI said, okay, we will give you, Minuteman, a five-year window to, to charge your section 10B average cost price if, 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 if towns don't come to terms with you, I mean, that if there's not a bilateral way that's at a different rate, then, then, then we will let you proceed. I think that would get people to the table. And if they knew by not coming to the table that they could still pay the $17,000, I think it would be harder, harder to have, to have progress there.
Jennifer, did you hear what you, okay? Sue is passing and Jeff?
Okay, so first, when I saw this section in the agenda, I got a hard lump in my stomach. Oh no, another 10X complicated stuff. But instead I found a section that is extraordinarily well-written and clear and very easy to read. Doesn't mean I agree with all of it, but I found the argument very clear to read and I greatly appreciated that. So I was very happy to see that. So a few, I think, additions to your text here, opinions in your text here. The first one is, is that a lot of people, some people were surprised that some of the towns that left, the enrollment dropped off even though it was cheaper. I was not surprised because a lot of those, some of the officials in the towns that left, despite all the words that came out of their mouth, are not fans of career tech education, either because they don't believe in it or because it costs them more money than keeping the student local. So I was not at the least bit surprised that some communities are making it hard, not just for us, but for anybody else to get in there and talk to their student, because they wanted to leave so they could eat, they could take that, steal that opportunity from the kids, in my opinion, and save money for the, for the town. Okay? Not surprised. So that's kind of the darker way of looking at it, rather than they just wanted to save a few dollars. Another thing that, another comment I made, is that there are, there are sort of two obstacles that catch in my throat a little bit with regard to access. One of which I doubt very much that this data is going to change, which is the exploratory issue, in, in which they have to explore locally, even if the program they want is not available. I don't expect them to change that. The other issue is if your school's program is full, we've fulfilled our obligation to you and you can't go to another district. So on paper, we say that you have the access to this kind of education, but reality, tough luck, kid. I wouldn't be surprised if that one was overturned, in which case I would think that our enrollment issue would be largely mitigated. Okay? Do you think that there's a bigger chance of that one being overturned than the other one?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, so those ideas are, are in my head now. So we go to your suggestion. One thing is that there's a lot of moving parts here. And the moving parts may be different, as you said, for each community. They may not be just one general strategy. I am afraid that, so the benefit to us of your agreement is we might get a few more dollars, which add up, and we get guaranteed access to talk to their kids. That would perhaps allow a lot more students to come, because the guaranteed access piece is probably more valuable to us than the extra dollar piece. So if we really were going to have guaranteed access, but otherwise we couldn't, that could make a very large difference for us, okay? But what do they get from it? Well, if they get the, the privilege of paying more money, I'm not sure that they understand that priority access is worth spending more money. So I'm not at all convinced that you're going to get more money for these people, especially since the, the history of how they've acted here. So I think it would be, the trade-off would really be, we'll give you a, a priority for programs, you know, that middle priority for programs, for guaranteed access to your kids. The problem with that is that, as was mentioned earlier, it may make them too comfortable to be in that middle ground, where really the pressure to join the district will be when those slots start to disappear for their kids. So if you believe that the efforts we're going to make are going to fill some of those slots, putting pressure on the communities who really. on the communities who really do care about vocational education, but want to kind of play the game of not taking any responsibility, that will push them in the direction, more than anything else, of deciding to join the district. So I'm unconvinced, by unconvinced, I mean, I'm not completely negative about it, but I'm unconvinced that this plan moving forward would be beneficial for a lot of communities, maybe targeted to one or two communities. But I would really lean on the superintendent on this to use his judgment as to whether this agreement or something like this agreement would be beneficial for a particular community. I want to hear his opinion on it, since he has to live with the results. And I'm not sure that we're far enough along in our thinking to actually talk to one of these towns yet. I think we'd have to do some more internal thinking and debating these issues and talking to the administration more before I'd be ready to say, let's actually talk to one of these communities and see if we can, as a sample, come to an agreement. So I'm saying that I'm skeptical about it, but I'm not completely negative on it. It depends on how events unfold a little bit to me. And I want to thank you again for putting it so clearly in the document. I didn't even need your explanation. Just read the memo and I got the whole thing.
Dave, do you have anything you want to say or ask?
The only comment I have is, again, you know, I'm kind of on the same thing with Ford. You know, we've got a new school and there's lots of buzz. We're a blue ribbon school. Where, I mean, there's going to be, if we communicate effectively, more interest within our district communities. And quite frankly, I see not too distant future wait lists for these external communities. And they're going to regret the fact that they left. And quite frankly, I believe, you know, you're either in the district or you're going to be left behind. And I think they were shortsighted. And that's just my own opinion. But I think we're going to do a lot of effort here for a situation that we're not going to really be exercising that frequently because we're going to be full up with district kids.
Alice?
A couple of things. One is, you know, if you look at George's yield numbers and percentages versus the number of people who have attended three events, two events, and so forth, even if you're conservative, you know, he's going to have a very sizable freshman class next year. And I would expect that to continue and that school to be full, as Dave said. As far as agreements go, it currently is required that the towns give us their seventh and eighth grade mailing lists. That's a state requirement. But we currently have membered towns that don't give us full access. So why one of these other towns would sign an agreement and then give us access to anything beyond like the CPAC group or something like that, I don't know. I can well imagine them signing an agreement, saying, sure, 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 we'll sign the agreement. You've got access to the CPAC group. There's four kids that you can talk to. And now we'll tell the Department of Education that we have a vocational program available to our students. And then they've solved a lot of problems that they think they have, but they won't solve any of our problems. And in fact, it would just cause more headaches. So I'm concerned about it, that the agreements wouldn't actually provide us with much in the end.
Any other question or comment by someone?
Thank you for the work.
I've got comments.
Yeah, go ahead.
But I don't know if Sue or, I mean, some of them are dealing with Jeff, so I'll... I don't know if the...
Or if anyone else wanted to jump in, Kevin or Jack or Ed. I think we should keep going now, wait for Jeff to come back.
Okay, great. So Alice, on the, you know, on the complexity about the agreements and the history of dealing with people in these towns, just, I just want to stress again that this is a school committee to school committee contract. So you're not dealing with the Board of Selectment on it. You're not dealing with town meeting. If, you know, as long as they're a non-member, this kind of agreement gets funded out of the school budget and the school committee would have to work on that with the town. But it doesn't involve us. And so I think it's an easier, simpler path that way. And, you know, I mean, if a school committee doesn't want to engage, that's, I mean, that's their choice. But I think we will find that some do. Carrie, we sort of talked about this. I mean, I do think that the access issue to the exploratory program or the access issue for kids who want to study a program that is filled up in their home, you know, home district, you know, those are the type B towns. And I certainly support us pushing ahead as much as possible on that. I just don't see it as, you know, as a conflicting thing because we're talking about two different groups of towns and the two different aspects of the regulatory system. I, you know, that I recognize that there is a finite amount of time and time and energy that we can put on it. But I think we, I mean, I think we're choosing to specialize here. I mean, Ed is definitely going to focus on the access questions for the type B towns. And I'm willing to pick up the ball on the type A towns. Pam, you sort of asked how would doing this partnership lead on the path to members? I mean, I think, you know, that you get those towns willing to pay a higher price for what they're getting here. And if you get them fully engaged as, you know, as active part of the admissions process, I mean, they will see that the schoolism filling up. I mean, if they, they will have more information and they will come back and say, okay, okay, we're ready to sign up as a member. Jen, you know, yeah, after hearing both Jeff talk, I actually am willing to drop the notion that we would seek Desi approval for the prioritization. I think you're probably, I mean, I don't think that's a deal breaker. I think the tuition is the key thing. And I can see how...
If we get the tuition.
Yeah, if, that the whole thing is based on, I mean, I understand, I lose any sort of influence with the type A towns if they can come here for the $17,000. But I do see, to Jeff's point, that, you know, not promising, trying to get this middle priority, but in that sense to say, okay, members first and everyone else is second. And if we happen to be able to entice type A B students to fill up the school, that's it. So I, so hearing that makes me think that the priority notion of that template could and probably should be dropped. And it's, you know, I mean, as I said, you know, there are, you know, there is the moving, there are the multiple moving parts of sort of seeing whether there's any receptivity from one or more type A towns at the same time going ahead with the regulatory filing that we would have to do. I mean, we would have to vote a new tuition schedule, which would be, you know, type B towns. It would look exactly the way it looks under the regulatory stuff. And for the type A towns, it would be, if you haven't signed a tuition agreement, it's going to look very much like what the, you know, what the average cost price is. And if we got Desi approval for that or something like that, then I think, then I think we would have a lot of, we would have some takers on the tuition agreements. And I guess, you know, we're always trained in our first meeting to be prepared, school and committee members, to think about the kids first. And then here, we're talking about, you know, Watertown and Belmont are, you know, are a big portion of the school here. And, you know, there are, you know, there are, I could see those two towns wanting to send 70-plus kids every year. And they don't have any other choice. I mean, if we, you know, sort of wind up either intentionally or unintentionally closing the door to those kids, you know, that they won't have it. And if you go back and listen to the town meeting in Belmont and Lincoln, you had a lot of parents very passionate about what this school has done there. And so I just want to, you know, ask you to think about, just backing off just a little bit from the hard line, you know, whether you're in or you're out. And, you know, and I understand why, you know, why you want to be hard on it because a lot of behavior from those towns, you know, wasn't what you deserve. But it's, you know, it is really time to try to step back a little bit from it, look for a little bit of reconciliation. And doing it with the school committees in those towns takes it out of the Board of Selectment and town meeting. And if we just have a couple of years where we get to sort of see what the new normal is, that the school is going to fill up, that Watertown and Belmont, and maybe some of the Deckeren towns really view this as an important part of their educational plan, I really do think it's going to work out fine in the end. And then everyone chooses to come in. But they just can't make that choice now.
I saw Carrie and then, and then...
I just want to say we're almost three hours into this meeting and we still have other items tonight. Just a caution. I know other people have lives too, but I have to leave my house at 6 o'clock in the morning.
I just want to clarify, I really think to negotiate individually with towns is wrong. I think if we negotiate, you have one negotiation, this is the deal or not at all. And that's where I would come down on that. I still think joining is the most important thing. I would also say that we care about education. We care about career tech education. I'm not sure the towns that changed the regional agreement to suit themselves so they could get out really care about education on a career tech basis. And I mean that for all of them. But if they want to come back because they really care about having access for their kids, then the dollars might not be as important as doing the right thing. And I just, you know, I think that's the way I sort of look at it. But I certainly don't think we should do an agreement individually. You should do it for all the towns, the same agreement, if you do one.
Sue, was it your hand that was up?
I may be looking at this too simply, but it seems to me like what the practical thing would be going forward would be the opposite of what you're saying. The only town that would really make a difference, I think, financially for us, is Watertown. And so perhaps this becomes the partner tuition agreement with type A towns that have a certain enrollment here. Because to spend a lot of time negotiating with towns that aren't going to send that many people, it doesn't seem to me that it's worth the time and energy investment. It's really Watertown and probably Belmont. And I like the idea of going with the volume of students being some criteria there. I have no idea if that's practical, but it sounds right to me. And talking about waiting till we're at full enrollment, I mean, that's what, five years away? I don't know if anybody has a ballpark guess about when that would be, but call it five years away. And if it takes us two years to get these agreements done, that's three years when we have some substantial additional funds coming in, additional relationship building with Belmont and Watertown, for example. I like the idea of limiting it to just the really good candidates to focus our energies and see if we can do something about treating the students from those, getting really good access for the students from those towns, and beefing up our marketing budget, for example, with some revenue. I have a hard time with the inequity of, you know, a student on one side of the border, the town pays half of what the member town pays. It's just, it's a reality, but it's not fair, so.
Jeff?
So I would like to hear Ed's comments on this, but perhaps in a future meeting after he has a chance to digest all this stuff. The second thing is that as far as filling the school, remember, all we have to do to put the pressure on the communities is to fill the freshman class. Because if the freshman class is filled, even though it'll take years to cycle through for the rest of the school...
Then we'll start getting...
So the year, the time in which the freshman class is nearing being full is when the pressure starts to be on these schools. Now, I don't count my chickens before they hatch, okay? So there are some signs pointing in the right direction. We've had that in the past. Now, you may say there are more economic indicators than usual pointing in the good direction, and we have a lot of strategies coming on. So it could be, you know, not being a very optimistic person, this is an unusual comment from me, it could mean we'll get close enough to the target freshman class being full in fewer years than we have thought previously. And then the pressure begins and then all this becomes irrelevant. So I do want to hear Ed's opinion, but I don't want to spend a lot more time on this topic tonight because there's other things to do. And I think you've got to kind of let it sit and settle for a little bit, unless Ed really wants to, you know, make his conclusions today, so.
Alice?
Comment, despite Jeff not wanting to hear it.
From you, I don't know.
Okay. So there are a number of small communities that are members that really went to the mat to get the money out of their towns to support this and build this new building. And it's a greater hardship for those communities, Bolton, Dover, because of the small number of people paying the tax bills to support a capital project like this. They did it because they believe in the school and they value the school and they value education. If we go and offer a different opportunity to other communities where they don't have to make a year-to-year commitment to the building project, but they get access and everything else that they really want, they will feel betrayed. I believe that there would be a substantial number of people who fought for this goal that will feel as if, you know, they could have had this too. Why did they stay members? And I would think that would be bad for us.
Ed, did you want to say anything? If not, well, if you do, fine. If not, we'll wrap this up.
I think Mr. Gamble could probably describe my opinions and probably better than anyone since we've had plenty of discussions about it. Some of my opinions and concerns are really irrelevant. I think the only thing that's relevant in this in terms of a very practical matter is ask the commissioner if he'll approve the tuition. If he does, then there's a pathway and the energy to be spent. If we're trying to spend all this energy ahead of that decision, I think it's foolish.
Okay. Can I just follow up?
Yes.
One quick thing.
Last comment.
Right, right. And it's not, I, I think in that ask, what I was hoping for from tonight, as the vote would have read, was to talk to one or two school committees just to get a sense of it because I think the commissioner would benefit from having as complete a picture as possible about what, you know, what the strategy is. Because the letter says we have to present a unique and extraordinary case here. And I just think doing a little bit of work is going to make that case stronger.
Okay. To me, there are two paths we take. One is to table, well, table the motion or to consider the...
Nobody made a motion.
I know, I know, I know. Yes, there is, there will be a motion. There can be a motion here that we can table or defeat. So what, anyone want to make a suggestion that we table the motion or that we bring it up and vote on it?
We don't, we don't have to table.
I know, but we can table, motions can be withdrawn or table too.
No motion made.
I know, I know. But once the motion is made, is what I'm trying to say. Do I hear a motion, someone to make the motion to explore parent tuition agreements with one or more type A non-member town school committees? Hearing no motion, we don't vote on it. Hearing no motion, we don't vote on it, and it certainly does not approve, it's just, doesn't exist, I guess, anymore.
I think that I would like to make the motion that we proceed with this. I would like to get a sense of where the committee is at, and certainly Jim has given us plenty of information and data and whatnot to work with, so I'll make the motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second? Well, the motion fails because, for lack of a second, that's the resolution. But I also do what I personally would like to thank Jim, and I think I have before, about what he's written for us, what the research he's done, and what he's presented for us. And as Jeff, as you have said, and I think I've said that, too, it's been very clearly presented, whether we like it or not, but it's been, we've been able to understand it.
The only comment I'd like to make leaving this for Jim is that as circumstance changes, things play out, your suggestion may become more desirable as events come out, so this may not be the end of it, because things change, and who knows what's going to happen.
I'll give you the last word.
Just a question for you, you know, do you have a sense as to whether we want to follow up with what Ed has suggested and try to move quickly on getting a read from the commissioner or not?
I'll have to think about that. Well, we can think about that. Okay. That's, yes, Carrie?
There was no motion under the other, the member town middle school, right? No motion there on?
Correct. Oh, what we decided, right, what we decided to do is to vote at the next meeting after it's been revised.
Right.
Yeah, right. We did not, it was, I guess you might say, tabled, we didn't vote on it.
But there was no motion there on?
No, no motion was not made. So this is a different category, you might say. All right. We move on to goal number five, possible executive session. Do we need an executive session?
Well, this sort of takes care of five and eight at the same time. We'll just give you an update.
All right. Do I hear a motion to...
We don't need an executive session. I'm just going to give you a public comment on what's going on.
Pardon me.
The last few days have been very, very busy around this issue of the memorandum of understanding between the Minuteman District and the town of Lexington. We've had several meetings with attorneys on both sides. Kevin and I attended our design cost meeting today, where the project, overall project costs came up significantly higher than we had anticipated and that we had been advised of for a couple of years. So we had another meeting after that with Lexington. The MOU is progressing. Our attorneys, each attorney's have the comments, and we expect to have them work on another draft. We've, I've instructed the design team to reduce the scope of the project, to see if we can still achieve the major objectives of the project, as we've discussed with you and with the town of Lexington. So I would expect that we would probably have to have an informational meeting with the school committee early in January to review where we are, but there simply has been, the scope of the project has just, it came up almost $14 million and...
For Lexington?
Yeah. And we know that's not, that's not what we had talked about, that's way beyond what I'm comfortable even talking to them about.
We talked more about eight.
But I should, I want to emphasize that we do have money in our project, which was confirmed today, to have a synthetic football field with lights and two grass fields. So we know we're going to get that. It's just the additional synthetic fields, a fieldhouse, and tennis courts are what would be added on, and the price of that was a concern today, so.
Okay.
So Lexington knows that's where we're at. Our attorneys are going to be talking to each other over the next day. We even had a joint meeting with bond counsel, with Lexington and Minuteman and bond counsel together to review some of the details, and there were no showstoppers there. It was actually a good meeting, clarifying some things, which will be incorporated into the MOU. We have a draft of a, we have an outline of a business plan that we're going to, that we received yesterday or today, today, that will pop. So we're going to have a lot more substantive, valid, reliable information in a few weeks after the holidays. That's my update. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Hearing none, because there are...
We ran along to the, I assume that's the REI, right?
Yeah.
Or REI?
Yeah, that's the extent of any of my updates, based upon what we learned today.
So we're not going to...
There's no need to go into executive session at all.
And we're not going to cover number eight?
Well, I just did. Yep.
I think I already said enough. We will be meeting again. We've reviewed now three versions of the budget. There may be an additional change that we talk about on the 8th, and January 8th is the next finance subcommittee meeting, which is a few days before the school committee meeting. And then the hearing is the February meeting. So it's, I think most of the rest of our discussion over the last few weeks has been on Jim's proposals, and I think we are where we are on those.
But one of the things we'll talk about is marketing cost and that sort of thing, the finance.
Correct, yes.
All in favor?
Mary Christmas.
Ed, this was really dealing with the same topic?
Pretty much the same, yeah.
All right, okay.
It's just been...
I'm sure, I'm sure. Are they angry?
No.
That's good.